Ready?
Ready to go.
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing on the town's website. For those of you who wish to join, who wish to view tonight's live meeting online only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting. If you're having difficulties accessing, hearing, in either case, visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. With that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the God, equal, just, and fair. If you are here with us tonight in person, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. In case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. I want to emphasize we welcome comments but must adhere to a time limit in order to accommodate all interested in speaking on any application this evening. Written comments on any application are also welcome. Please address these comments to the members of the board and send via email, mail, and or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell in the Building Department. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our November 6 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. John, would you take us through the agenda?
Yes, turning to number three on the agenda, application of Mark Currie and Keith Seigerman, 3 Maple Avenue and 9 Gravel Hill Road, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 900-228-2-22 and 900-228-2-23. These, this application has been withdrawn. Number six on the agenda, the application of Richard Tlesnik, One Shore Lane, West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-382-1-29. This application is being re-advertised for January 15, 2026. Application number eight on the agenda, application of Janice as trustee of the Janice Spindel Revocable Trust, UAD, May 14, 2024, 21 Lilly Pond Drive, Sag Harbor, Suffolk County Tax Map number 2, 900-26-1-37. I move to adjourn this applica, the hearing on this application to January 15, 2026.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
Number nine on the agenda, application of Segundo Romero, Saldana, and Fanny R. Espero Prado, 8 Justin Avenue, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-97-2-50.1. This application has been withdrawn. Uh, turning to the decision calendar, the decision and the application of Bert Carfarella, 17 Dock Road, Remsenberg, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-366-1-10. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to December 4, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia. Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
Uh, decision in the application of 40 Ocean View Drive LLC, 40 Ocean Drew Drive, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-271-1-44. I move to reopen the hearing on this application for written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I further move to, uh, close the, uh, applica, the hearing on the application of 40 Ocean View Drive LLC for decision later tonight.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Turning to the decision in the application of Malcolm Merrick, 385 Oak Avenue, Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-166-1-22.5. I move to reopen the hearing on this application for written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I further move to close the, uh, hearing on the application of Malcolm Merrick for decision later tonight.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Robert Fuhr and Judith Lang, 32A Penny Lane, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-323-2-31. I move to reopen the hearing on this application for written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I further move to close the hearing on the application of Robert Fuhr and Judith Lang for decision later tonight.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Turning to the decision of Anthony in the, of the application Anthony Adino and Rosemary Adino, 14 Port Elizabeth Drive, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-345-1-2.1. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to December 4, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Did you do Cromwell?
Which one?
Wasn't that another one that?
No, Cromwell's not.
Okay, we don't have to reopen?
Okay, turning to the, uh, decision in the application of LHBH Properties LLC, 97 School Street, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-86-2-7.5. I move to reopen the hearing on this application for written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close the hearing on the application of LHBH Properties LLC for decision later tonight.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, starting with number one on the agenda, application of Nicholas Martin, 2173 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-85-2-6. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-95 Schedule of Off-Street Parking Spaces for Non-Residential Uses to allow nine parking spaces where 15 is required for the proposed conversion of a one-family dwelling to a business occupancy and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Are either of you attorneys? Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address separately, obviously.
Okay, Nick Martin, Martin Architects, uh, 2913 Montauk Highway in Sagaponik.
Okay.
2173 in.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay, tell us about this application.
Yeah, so, um, we are, um, applying to, uh, convert this residence to commercial. And, um, in order to do so, uh, it's requiring the size of the property, which is pre-existing non-conforming to the size of lot, uh, for 15 spots. My, um, my point though is that the lower level is currently, um, all storage space. There's no offices. The planning board has asked us to write these words as office, but, um, my daughter's an a, an artist and she keeps her material there and I'm also an artist, so that's, um, really all it's for. I have some photographs showing that office. So, um, we also have on the property several very old trees that we'd like to keep, large alcovas, a few, um, beautiful, um, maples. And as a result, we're not quite sure how to add these spots. And, and the last point, on the Montauk Highway side, um, we've been told that, um, you don't prefer parking on that, on the front edge of Montauk Highway, so we've maximized as much parking as possible based on the code on the rear and side yards. Um, so we're asking for the variance in that, in those ways.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there anything you want to contribute to that?
Yeah, I think that's pretty much over there, the basement. Uh, if you took out the lower level, I think our, our, our parking is way less.
Lower level meaning first floor?
Below grade.
Below grade.
Oh, all right, lower level is below grade, okay.
This was an existing house from 1923 and it had the same, uh, resin all that period. And I purchased it three years ago and, um, would like to convert it to, uh, commercial space, but I kept the footprint as is. I, I merely, um, now I'm thinking maybe it was a mistake. I finished the basement, not all of it, but portions of it. And, um, that's what's kicking in this question mark. But it's literally just storage space. And, uh, my, my daughter, um, may use it for her video production, but that's.
Her what?
Video production. She's a singer-songwriter and she, she does some performances in the area. But, um, that's literally a very rare occasion.
It's not happening, nobody lives down there.
No one lives down there.
Can I just clarify your, um, because I'm not the planner working on this. Just first of all, we, um, I know that you came in with an application, it was deemed incomplete, um, because, uh, you have to get variances and, um, so that's, that's that.
They're before you for a site plan, right?
They're before us for a site plan. So that's an existing building, so you're, you're using the square footage of the existing building, correct? Right? Okay. My question is, you said the planner were told you to label office.
Yes.
However, you, you said it's for storage, your parking is basing the count, the parking based on it as storage, is that correct?
Not originally, and then we had to go, I think we were told to resubmit and recalculate it as office.
This process started about eight months ago.
Okay.
And in the middle of that process, um, they required us to, to relabel it as office, which kicks in this variance.
So you told to relabel the, the basement as.
And who told you, who told you to relabel it?
The planner.
Who, at the town?
The town.
Do you know who you're working with?
Yes, we do.
It's Prenta, but, um, it's Prenta working on this. My, my point is, is that we haven't produced any reports, we haven't done a thorough review. This is going to get referred to planning, you know, for, for comments. So I just, I want, I hear what you're saying and everything. I don't want to speak for the, of another planner and everything, but let's, let's look at the parking a little bit to make sure that, you know, maybe it's not as bad as everybody thinks.
I would rather have the planning staff report before we made any decision. Okay.
And I want to be fair to the.
We'd rather get a report from planning because maybe you won't even need a variance.
Yeah, well, it would be, more importantly, it has to be referred to, to us anyway for comment, that's just what the process requires for the zoning. Um, but that's good, let's, let's get to the planning. I spoke to Prenta about this today, we'll get you one the first available. Um, and, and let's get the planning board's comments on this, let's make sure that.
But just for my clarification, that should, the planner did come to the site and did an inspection and spoke with us and then helped us with the application and then requested that additional, uh.
A week on here, yeah.
Yes, it's been many, many months.
No, I understand. Um, but, but it, now that you're before the zoning board, they're required to refer, because you don't have formal comments from the planning board to this board on this application. And what I'm saying is, you know, to your benefit, it's, it's going to be referred to us, you'll get, you'll get comments, maybe to be helpful.
We're, it's going to stay, it's not going to get marked off, I don't know.
But Kevin, did you, you on the lead on this, you had a couple of observations.
Just, just a couple of things. One, what's the nature of the business that?
That will be?
Yeah, and the only, my curiosity is, you know, if I also want to be clear that I'm understanding how the, the reference to using the Long Island Railroad parking is suggesting your employees will be encouraged, uh, or in otherwise incentivized to use the rail, not the car, to have the parking demand that is being calculated in the code, not necessarily required. And so, you know, if it was a geriatric physical therapy office, it, that would be a disbelievable, uh, uh, story.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand what it, what it is that you're, is the nature of the business that makes that possible.
Architecture.
Okay.
And the majority of the applicants and, and potential employees live west because it's unaffordable to live here. And it's seven minutes to the, the, um, Long Island Express, uh, Long, Long Island Railroad. And it's, um, it's, gets them to the office at 9:05.
Okay.
And they leave at 5:15 to make that, and then there's the cannonball on Friday. So it's incredibly efficient.
They're not using it for parking, they're using it to take the transit.
Taking the train, leave, not even having a car and then walking.
They're walking.
They're walking in the.
It wasn't clear when you said, you know, they'll be using, I was thinking they're going to park their cars.
I had, that's what I wanted to get clarified too, right? So they're, okay, so that's one story. Thank you for that. Um, so I went to the sign on Saturday and I would have done what most people would have done if they couldn't park inside, they parked on Montauk Highway.
Right.
And, and, and even that was kind of crowded, I, I found, right? So then I went through the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I wondered, might you get one or two more parking spaces if the Hildreth Lane access was abandoned?
Uh, the issue is the setback from the, the Hildreth Road. We're right at the, at the edge of it.
Okay.
People get our setback. Um, and, um, uh, the reason that it's crowded is because the Citarella employees.
They park there.
Don't use the Citarella parking lot that's right next door.
Right.
They own that building and there's probably 25 lots, but I've never seen a, 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 a car park there, so they park up and down Montauk Highway.
It's standard practice for a business owner to say leave the parking spaces for customers to park somewhere else.
They'll even cut off my driveway once a week to take the whole spot.
I didn't understand your answer about closing off the Hildreth exit, is there an issue with that?
Setbacks.
I could jump in on that.
Yeah.
So the setback for parking is 20 feet from the property line. And, uh, as you see on the dimensions.
Oh, I, yeah.
You can't put that line across.
Your one is already 20 feet.
All right, so you're really at that point.
You gave us a variance of, say, 10 feet, we could add two more.
All right, so, so the question is whether we could give you a variance on the setback versus a variance on the spots, the numbers, it'll decrease the need of the spot.
And can you?
It could be, be a, a reason more to get planning board comment on that.
If you could communicate that flexibility, that I would entertain that, and I have no objection to the premise of leaving large mature trees as a, as a way to accommodate one or two parking spaces that are, that are, you know, you're imagining. Uh, let's see.
I, I had a question, um, and this goes to the fact that variances run with the land. So, you know, while your business is, you know, one that doesn't look like it's going to be, you know, requiring a lot of parking, there is no guarantee that that in fact will not be the case in the future, and I'm sure planning will look at that as another aspect. I mean, you may sell this at some point and, you know, the geriatric rehab center will be coming in, so, yeah.
Just, just to that point, if you look at their site plan, they show office and retail, um, which is fine, it doesn't make a difference, the parking requirement is one per 180 for that, for those uses. Um, the parking requirement for medical office space is one per 150, so they wouldn't, you know.
All right, we were just using that as a.
So there's even just little nuanced, you know, parking requirements. Any cha, any change of use for which the parking requirement does not change, there's no issue. But if it does, and they're short, yes, then we will absolutely look at it.
Okay.
And when you're before the planning board, I just want to be sure I understood this. So the basement's supposed to be for storage, but I thought you said your daughter or somebody uses the basement for studio work.
Well, she's a, she's a singer-songwriter.
Okay.
So she may go down there with her piano and sing and it's perfect because no one can hear it.
No, no insult directed at your daughter.
No, she's an amazing singer, but, um, she'll go down there and she will, um, record something.
Okay, so it's not used as an office where there's people coming in and out to conduct business?
It's a single human. And then I, I also am a painter and I, and I have not had the time, but hopefully as I am, do you know, I have an 11 and a 13-year-old. Uh, as I am, do you know, I, I would like to eventually be able to work again.
Okay.
Okay.
So this sounds like something that we're going to adjourn at this point.
I would say, and.
What, what kind of timing do you think we?
When do you think the planning board will see this, Anthony, if you know?
We're currently working, we, you know, we have one meeting in December. Um, by now, you know, this is Prenta's application, so I can't speak for what her.
Going to January?
Yeah, I would say probably, yeah.
February.
I would probably say February. Give you extra time.
Have you, I believe that this is in the, um, the Bridgehampton.
Historic?
Bull's, yeah, Bull's Head Historic District, have you been to the Landmark's Historic Board yet?
It, it, during the application process, it all passed through.
Okay, well, I think you have to affirmatively make an application to the Landmark's.
We did and.
You did, okay.
It's all been completed.
And we wait to hear from their, from them as well.
Comments as well.
Well, that was a previous application, um.
Can you just give us the report, can you submit it?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, if you could refer it to us for our records.
For the house.
For the renovation, yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. Oh, I see, okay.
I'm just curious, is it possible to be sooner than February? Is it?
The problem is your planning.
Well, what are your dates in, in January?
January 15th, February 13th.
Just the one meeting, because the first of January.
15th, you said?
Yeah, one meeting.
15th.
15th, only one meeting.
We could get comments, you guys, by the 15th.
Okay.
I could be, you know.
I appreciate that.
I don't think this is going to be a big, you know.
No, it's not.
It's not a big issue, so let's, let's put it on for, all right, Kevin, you want to?
January 15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um, for, we're going to adjourn, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the application.
Was anybody here?
Hold open a couple here.
Oh, wait, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Audience.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I just was like moving right along. Anybody in the audience wishes to be heard on 2173 Montauk Highway? Oh, yes, sir, please come up. We can go there. Are you an attorney?
No.
Okay, don't, don't act like that. I mean, that's not so bad.
Everybody has that reaction.
You can either speak there or sit at the table. I'm going to swear you in.
It's not a bad thing to be an attorney.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
William, William Imperial, and I'm on behalf of ownership.
I think he's going to turn your microphone on. Sorry.
Just say your name again.
Will, William Imperial, and it's on behalf of ownership of, uh, 47 Hildreth Lane, which is right across the, uh, the street. Uh, on behalf of ownership, just a quick question, um, looking at the site plan, currently, how many, how many are on-site right now? That was, I was trying to figure, I count nine that's on that site plan, but like right now, I, I know it's like, just like a dirt parking lot.
Just want to understand, you're the house that's been in construction?
Yes, 40, right across the street, yeah, 47.
It's like you're doing your stuff.
Thank you, yeah, we're hoping to be done soon.
So in other words, it's not marked off? I was, I was also at the site.
Yeah.
It's a dirt, it's a dirt area, when I was there, there were six cars parked, um, kind of randomly with some spaces and stuff like that, so.
It's a stone dust, it's like a European.
Well, I didn't mean to suggest dirt versus stone dust, but, you know.
It looks like there's room for nine.
So that, that's what you, right now, it is nine that you have in there.
They're proposed, they're proposed.
It's not really expanded.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just, I was just trying to figure it out. And then the other thing was, I don't know, in the, um, in the letter that went out, it says there's non-parking spaces where 13 spaces are required. And then I think on the agenda that got posted tonight, it said 15. So is it 13 required or 15?
Um, yeah, so we originally, um, submitted 13, but then, uh, working with the Building Department, they adjusted the calculation to 15.
To 15, okay.
It was like point one had it round over to one, like point five had it round over It was like point one had to round over to one, like point five had to round over to one, so we couldn't just tally them all.
Gotcha. Okay. Those are, I just wanted to understand the application better for ownership. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify too, there's no parking on Hildreth Lane, right? Okay.
There's a sign literally.
Does anybody actually, I mean, is it one of those signs where no one follows it and everybody parks there anyway?
He said once a week he gets closed off in the back, but.
Oh, no, on Montauk Highway.
Oh, on Montauk Highway, okay.
I haven't seen it, other than when.
It's a now, hopefully nobody knows.
When the neighbor has an event, there doesn't need parking.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone online who wishes to be heard?
There is one person.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion.
Oh, wait, there's a person.
I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Please state your name and address.
Meredith Berkowitz. My address is one Cody Way, but I'm actually here on behalf of the Bridgehampton Civic Association. So, I just had a couple of quick questions that I just want to make sure I understand this, so when I go back to our board, I can clarify what it is all about. The nature of the business is an architectural firm, it sounds like. And so, my question is if the request in the reduction of parking is actually over thirty percent, like a one-third reduction in the number of spaces. But it seems like retail and office, especially if it's retail, if it were to change in the future with a different owner, since the variance would still be applicable, you know, my concern would be, would there then be enough parking for retail? Retail obviously brings in many more people and traffic, foot traffic, than does, say, an architectural firm. And then, my other question was also about, you know, you talked about the employees taking the LIRR and how do, you know, do they walk from the LIRR to the space? And then also, what, and cross Montauk Highway, and, you know, is that, you know, safe to do? There's not a crosswalk there. Or do they do that at the light and then walk down? And then also, about the customers, would they, I assume they would then use those nine spots on-site? So, is that correct, that all the employees would be at the LIRR and then all of those spots would be for the customers? And then, lastly, I just wanted to understand how many spaces would be required without, it sounds like that it would be fifteen with the basement storage, but if you didn't include the basement storage and you were just considering the actual office retail space, how many spaces would be required if that were the case? Thank you.
Anthony can answer a bunch of those. I can answer most of those questions. So, it's quite easy to walk to the.
You can address your comments to the board, though. You don't have to address them.
Okay. It's quite easy to walk to the train station. It's, there's a crosswalk and it's not a difficult thing.
Good jump in. I've been doing it every day for two years.
But it's quite easy. The second thing is the, there are not many, I have an office at two nine one three Montauk Highway in Sagaponak. There are very few client meetings these days in person. It's dropped down to one a week maybe, and office is not at all. Everyone is Zooming, and the higher the client typically, you're going to them, they're not coming to you. So, I don't foresee very many clients coming to the, to the site. And was there another one? The number, as we're discussing, I believe it's fifteen if the basement was all office, and I believe the number was as low as ten if it wasn't. Nine or ten even, carried over one point.
Okay, that's going to be addressed by planning, I'm sure.
And the lower level added up to five spots.
Yeah.
So, that's on the calculation.
It's ten.
Then there was retail versus office. I feel like that's just.
Yeah, this is, hey, Meredith, it's Anthony.
Hi.
Just on your question about the, you know, what if it's a change in use, you know. You know, general office space, you know, and retail, general retail have the same parking requirement. It's one per one-eighty. So, typically, if something was going from a florist to some other type of, you know, retail card store or something, we would not, you know, have to really look at it because the parking requirement doesn't change. So, it's.
Right. But a florist, for example, would have more foot track, like, foot traffic like.
That's correct, Meredith, but the town code requirement doesn't differentiate, you know, from those uses. And something like that, you know, that would come in as a type-two action, you know, wouldn't even be really be subject to review. So, I'm just saying, you know, that the parking requirement is what it is, you know, for those uses, and it would cover those uses in the future.
Yeah, and just.
Right, but that's fifteen, right? So.
But, I mean, when we say the variance runs with the land, it's for nine spaces where fifteen is required. If the use changes and the use requires twenty, the variance doesn't give them nine spaces where twenty is required. They come back to this board.
Right. Okay, what I was trying to make is a different point, which is that if it's a florist office, nine spaces might not, for an architectural firm, nine spaces might seem adequate for a florist or some other, a retail clothing store, for example, then nine spaces might not seem, you know, as adequate, right? And I guess that is for planning, so that can be addressed through the planning board, but that was kind of the question that I had. But also, if it seems like you're getting to the fifteen versus ten and you're only talking one spot because it's because of the basement counting, well, then, you know, but then in the future, can that basement be used? If, again, he's no longer the owner and the variance runs with the land, suddenly, you're using that basement space in a retail business, you know, you've got, you know, how many people needing to park and then park on the street and crowding in the street parking that is there? So, these were just questions.
So, why we're now having the conversation again? Please clarify this. So, if the planning board or this board restricted the basement use only to storage, what would your parking requirements be?
So, the calculations over here, it adds up to the lower level, adds up to five spots.
Yeah, so that's.
Five. Five less. So, okay.
Yeah.
My guess, though, is that if the planning board was going to do that, they'd be like, rip out all of the improvements, you know, like, make sure that it's not going to be used.
And like I said, let's, let's get the planning board's comments on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of what Meredith's saying in the CAC that we're going to look at, for sure.
All right.
Thank you. I'll have a good night.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to make the motion to adjourn this application number one on the agenda, Nicholas Martin, to January fifteenth.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Tonya.
Aye.
Mr. Repin.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair outside. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, number two on the agenda, application of L.A. Luxury Construction Incorporated, Twenty-five Spinner Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one thirty dash one dash eight. Applicant request relief from Town Code Section three thirty dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section three thirty dash eighty-three C yards, to allow a pool to be located within the required side yard for the principal building on the nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Brian Whalen, seven six eight Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor Turnpike, Bridgehampton.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian. Tell us about this application.
This is an application for a swimming pool on Twenty-five Spinner Road, Southampton. It'd be the main street, its office, Henry, just south of the Burger King, for those of you who have not visited the site. This application went approximately three years ago. There is no wetlands on the property, but on the lot to the west, there are wetlands. The lot also to the north cannot be built on, or so I was told by not only the owner, but by the conservation department, because it is, also has tremendous wetlands and a pond. I've actually walked there with the neighbor years ago. This permit has been issued this year to build a new construction home. The conservation department did not want the swimming pool, which is why I'm here in a conforming area behind the house. I believe it is only allowed in the rear yard here in Southampton. So, it was suggested by Marty Shay to relocate, as well as the building department, to the north of the house in the side yard. And there can be no building. It's lovely vacant woods, and that would be situated approximately a hundred and twenty-one plus feet from the wetlands on the neighboring property. That's the farthest that the surveyor, Twin Forks, could place the swimming pool, so it had lessened the impact and also not encroach in the front yard, in which case, we would be requesting another variance. We also lowered, restricted, I should say, the size of the pool. We initially had a twenty by forty, and we shrunk it to eighteen by thirty-six. I think the character of the area, I don't know which of you had visited the site, would be nicest. A lot of the homes in the greater area have a swimming pool, so there'd be no negative impact on the character of the area. The impact, obviously, we are leaving the cottage on the property and are going to attach it to the new home, but we feel that the swimming pool, obviously, a lot of people would like a swimming pool, such as myself. And again, it would not deteriorate in any way the character of that street or the surrounding.
Any questions? Bob, this is yours. Do you want to start us off?
So, you had worked with Marty Shay and kind of directed, not told you where, but directed you where the pool would be best situated?
Exactly. Just to lessen, as I had mentioned, the impact upon the.
What's the size of the pool?
Twenty.
Eighteen by thirty-six.
Eighteen by thirty-six, okay.
Do you have a wetlands permit?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
And you have a DEC, letter of no jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
Have you heard anything from the neighbor that abuts where the property line? What you said is vacant within two hundred feet. Is that accurate?
On the north side where the pool is, quite a bit more than that. And then, it really drops off, there's a, you know, like a swampy sort of pond. I have worked with the neighbor, he's in construction here in the town as well.
Did they have anything to say to you about?
I went to the neighbor to the east because I know they rent from them, and they, I called, but they, they did not respond to the call. This is many moons ago, but again, I don't think they have any objection. I couldn't, I couldn't say that for sure.
It appears heavily wooded back there, right?
Super heavily wooded, yeah, lovely.
The setback, the side yard setback is at ten feet, is that correct?
Yes, and that's.
So, that would meet the accessory side yard setback, so there's no setback requirements that you're asking for.
Correct.
Well, it's a landlocked parcel. I see no problem with this application.
The cesspools are where? So, is that kind of indicating we had to put the pool also?
The cesspools will be that new, you know, highly restricted and monitored.
Thank you.
You know, that was approved by the Suffolk County Health Department about two years ago, you know, subject, of course, to the DEC and the Southampton Conservation Department. So, it will be monitored on an annual basis, and maintenance has to be performed also on an annual basis under.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on Twenty-five Spinner Road? Please come forward. You can either sit here or go there. Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Are you an attorney?
No.
Let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Lori Setmeyer, seven fifty-nine North Sea Road.
Okay.
Lori Setmeyer. S U T T M E I E R. Thank you.
Okay. Lori, tell us what your comments are.
I have owned both properties, adjacent to his properties. I have objections on many levels of this. It's put in for an accessory building on the survey. It's put in as a dwelling. He's asking for relief when this property is four tenths of an acre, which a third of it is set back by wetlands. This is both the proposed dwelling and the pool are both in the front yards of the existing house that's there right now, and would be in my front yard, across the street, within two hundred feet of his property. I already give him a two hundred and sixty-foot easement into my property. The survey would have me believe that he wants to have you believe that this is a cul-de-sac, when this is straight into the property. And it looks like he wants to widen his easement. It's existing at forty-four feet, but on, right now, it's on the left side of the easement. The cul-de-sac and where his parking would be would be in direct line with the cars coming down the street for both neighbors, myself and the other neighbor that has been there since that dwelling originally existed by Reverend Spinner, who actually gave that house to the gravedigger that worked for him years ago. And that's why that is broken up the way that that is. And these, these properties are extremely old. He has taken almost every tree down on the property. There's a giant four-foot-in-diameter oak tree that's on the property line that he pushed over into my property. It is not vacant land, nor is it non-buildable. It is six and a half acres that I purchased in two thousand, and I love it. And I don't want a swimming pool where he's going to cut all the arms and the branches off the rest of the oak trees that are leaning into his third of an acre. This is so wrong on so many levels. I just keep looking at it, and the entire front yard, he wants to develop and make it into his own little Idaho. He does not live there. It's an investment piece of property that he picked up as.
It honestly doesn't matter.
Okay. I'm just saying that it's wrong on so many levels. All he's looking at is how he can get as much money out of this piece of property as possible. It's a paper road. It's non-paved. He's going to build another building on this property, or try to, when it's not even maintained by the town. You know, so I'm, I'm driving into my, into my front yard, and it's a potholes, because he's driving across my whole front yard, and now he wants to add more traffic to it.
I'm very confused, Lori, in terms of where, it looks to me on this survey that your land is up here. Is that correct?
There's two. There's one on the bottom, two. One for Larry, one in your name and one in Larry. Yeah.
Sorry, where?
There's two sitting on separate lots.
Oh, here? Okay. So, when you're saying, which is your front yard?
This is my front yard.
Yeah. This, is it on the right of way, or is it facing?
This is, this is my front yard.
Yeah, but the pool is here.
This is my front yard right here.
The pool is here.
The pool is, this is my backyard.
I know, so it's not.
Actually, this is my front yard, because I have two dwellings on the opposite end of this property. But should I ever come in here, which is my front yard, my house faces here, I was told by the town that this is my front yard.
Okay.
I originally thought it was this that made me put a phone, a house number here. This is my front yard.
Okay.
So, this is my front yard. He gets into it right here. Now, it looks like he's wanting to come into here. These are old existing oak trees. There's no cul-de-sac here. This neighbor, his house is, is back here. It's back here, level with their dog kennel. This is all stuff that was, was parallel and intentionally built when he built this at a later date. This was the original house and the property, of which he developed this whole area.
Okay.
And now, he wants to develop every single inch of that property.
How was the easement granted?
Excuse me?
Was the easement granted when you owned it, or?
When Reverend Spinner owned the property to give it to his gravedigger, is when he.
It looks like the easement is thirty-two feet.
Okay, well, on his, on his thing, he would have you believe that it was forty-four.
Well, at the entrance to his property, he, he makes, but the easement itself is thirty-two feet. This is what's forty-four, is just the measurement from the access to his property.
The size of the easement is not relevant to this application.
Well, the way that it looks also in, for the parking, it looks like he wants to, to boost down into my property and use up, you know, take down the trees, because there's big oaks sitting right there on the corner. You know.
Ma'am, I, I understand your ire, but, and your frustration, but none of this is relevant to the application we have here today. The application we, the application we have here today is whether he can put a pool on that side yard and have it be a hundred and twenty-one feet from the wetlands. That's it.
That's it.
That's it. So, if you have an objection at the pool, the only thing I heard so far was that he may cut the limbs from the next-door trees that overhang the pool. And then, any other objection to the pool? The pool specifically?
He has plenty of use of the property, and it's, it's very comfortable the way it is, that there's no reason to have a pool, he, of that size particularly.
But here's the, every individual has the right to do with their property what they want, not what you want.
I put, I, I talked to Marty Shay yesterday. He's lying. He didn't say, Marty Shay, that that was a good idea for him to put a pool there.
Marty will have his comments to us, that we'll get, we're going to get Marty's comments.
Yeah, because it wasn't true, because I don't have a pool. Marty told me factually that he doesn't have a pool either, that he has a very comfortable thing in that he tried to put in for two houses on one piece of property.
We're not dealing with that, as, as John mentioned.
Okay.
We're dealing with.
We also have a wetlands permit, ma'am.
Is, is this, a dwelling was approved? This one in the front yard was already approved? Is that what you're telling me?
Building permits.
It has a building permit, yes.
And it's not coming to us for a variance?
The only variance it came to us for was to place the swimming pool in the side yard and have it be a hundred and twenty-one feet from, hold on, from the wetlands. He has a wetlands permit, which allows him to put the pool where it is, within a hundred and twenty-one feet of the wetlands.
And he meets the setback requirements for an accessory structure. So, the only thing.
In the front yard.
Side yard.
It's his side yard.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I can't tell you what your front yard is, but it's his side yard.
And the neighbor's front yard.
That's, that's.
But it's not the neighbor's front yard. It's a, it's a, it's a heavily wooded, right, right of budding?
Not anymore, it's not. He cut the trees all down.
Did you cut the trees down on your neighbor's property, sir?
Never.
Okay, thank you. That's enough for me. That's enough for me.
And can I ask you, you know, in terms of sort of a barrier, I mean, did you, have you talked about a vegetative barrier between the two properties to, you know?
You have to put a fence up anyway with the pool.
Well, you have to put a fence, but is there something that could be a little bit more attractive with some hedges and something like that?
Yeah, maybe you can put cedars up there, too, because it's not fair that I have to look at that mess.
Just for some clarification, we have permission from the DEC, and I lived on this property for over a year and a half. I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty-six. We don't want to destroy the trees. I have children who went to Hampton Bay's Elementary and other schools in the town here. And we had permission only from the DEC because of, I believe, the VAT. Before the November thirtieth, we could only cut one tree down. Since I've owned the property, and any police officer can tell you that when this property was bought, this property, the owner had died, and for five years, there was a tenant who they could not get out of the property. She sold to all the people in town, instead of going to Major's Dump, she put ten thirty-yard dumpsters of garbage on the property. I removed it. I maintained the road solely while I lived there, which had not been maintained for close to ten years. Some of the potholes.
Okay, but let's try, let's try to keep our comments to the.
Yeah, no, no, I am.
And with regard to the clearing.
Did you, you maintain it, or did my son?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Ma'am, please, you can't talk to each other. You should be speaking to the board, first of all. Second of all, there's also no request for any variance with regard to clearing restrictions. So, no one has, this, this property has not been overcleared, according to the building department, which makes those determinations, and we're not here for that either. So, I'd like to hear if you have anything else with regard to why the swimming pool should not be in the side yard, other than trees being cut down or trees, limbs being cut from the neighbor's side?
And I would also like to hear, is there any mitigation that you would suggest to, you know, to try to help your neighbor?
I know that no trees can be cut on the property to the north, the neighbor's property, number one, so it can't be built on, which I did speak to Marty Shay multiple years ago on it, when I was living there, and personally met Marty Shay three years ago on the property. So, I would, I'd be happy to put up like a stockade fence, not a PVC, which is conducive to the character of it, but there's, there's only trees and nobody, again, I don't have a topography, I only have a topo on, on this property, but on the neighbor's, it drops off, because I had been down there invited by her son years ago, and had walked down with her son on the property. And I had hired him to help me to maintain the road, because I had hired two other individuals with Bobcats to fix the road, because you couldn't even drive up and down the road in a car.
The town comes in twice a year and fixes the road.
Okay, well, we're getting far field together.
Yeah, we're really off, off our subject, as Mr. Leonard suggested. Do you have any other comments at this point? No, I mean, you know, we're dealing only with the pool, and we really are trying to limit you to three minutes, but we've given you, we've given you a grace period today.
No, I just don't think that he should be given relief on the pool. It's not, it's, it's not within the building envelope. He's already taken up all the other space within his building envelope, and that it's, it's a sign of greed.
Thank you.
And, but there's nothing here that suggests that he's asking for a variance on coverage, which would mean.
He's asking for a variance to go on the north side of the property. He's asking for.
No, but not asking for a coverage variance, which would mean that there's too much being built on the piece of property.
No, but it's, it's being pushed over onto my part of my.
It's not pushed onto your property. It's still on his property.
Let's just move on.
It's not within the building envelope.
Okay.
And he's already put that dwelling, the second house, that he's only going to connect with a little breezeway or a little roof onto the property, and then just add how many more people are going to fit into there on a road that nobody maintains but the town twice a year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one.
Okay, so as I understand it, you would consider putting a stockade fence on that side?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the board want any trees planted or vegetative screening?
I thought we should do some kind of hedging. Is that possible, hedging?
I'd be happy to put up some hedging.
Okay, okay.
So, let me just throw this idea out. If you move the, the pool directly south from its present location, the wetland setback is essentially maintained, to get a little more space between your property line to the north and, and the pool itself, for whatever vegetation fencing or other things that you're putting in.
But he, but he doesn't need a setback.
He doesn't need a setback.
He doesn't need setback relief, so.
No, no, I understand that, but it's just a question of functionality, right? If you're going to put screening.
That's not her, that's not her property.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
He was just making a suggestion that if you want it to be a little bit more friendly with your neighbor, perhaps consider dropping it further away. That is not something that we would demand, because you don't need a variance on it. But it was just a mere suggestion.
Yep.
Again, I'd be happy to keep it with the stockade fence and to put up some sort of like English hedge row or, you know, some sort of plants.
Native planting eastern red cedar or something like that.
Okay.
Eastern red cedar is wetland-friendly.
We can't yell from the audience.
All right, so I think that that's something that we would like to see if we do grant this variance, so...
We could incorporate that, and I'd be happy to.
Okay. Okay. All right, Bob, this is yours.
This is mine, so...
Did I check if there's anybody on Zoom?
No, you didn't.
Is there anyone on Zoom? I thought I did.
You did. No one's on Zoom.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
This is mine. I'm going to close the...
There's so much going on.
I'm going to close the public hearing, hold it open for written submissions till December 5th, with a decision on December 18th.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four on the agenda, application of Pierre Vincenzo Russo, 151 Church Lane, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-86-4-7.1. Applicant requests the following relief from Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Law. One, an east skyplain encroachment of 215.6 cubic feet for a proposed second story addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. And two, a west skyplain encroachment of 6.4 cubic feet for a proposed balcony railing and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Are you an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, just please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Denise Shern. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm with the Adam Miller Group at 2462 Main Street in Bridgehampton.
Denise, tell us about the application.
I just wanted to first mention that Eric Peterson, the architect, is on Zoom if we have questions for him. And the applicants are on Zoom as well.
So if they're going to speak, I have to swear them in, but let's see if they need to speak.
They may not need to.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a property located at 151 Church Lane in Bridgehampton. It's situated in the R20 zoning district, but it only has a width of 60 feet and a lot area of 18,097 square feet, making it pre-existing and non-conforming in that district. The existing structure is partially two stories and was granted a variance from this board, from the pyramid law, to build the second story. The existing application is for a 326-square-foot second story over a portion of the dwelling that remains a single story. That will require a pyramid encroachment of 215.6 cubic feet on the easterly side of the premises. The proposal also includes a new 44-square-foot roof deck off the rear of the house, and the railing of the roof deck encroaches into the pyramid by 6.4 cubic feet. Accordingly, we are asking for two variances from Town Code Section 330-84D of the Town Code for 215.6 cubic feet and 6.4 cubic feet for these improvements. As the board knows, you must weigh the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community, considering your five factors. I would submit that grant of the requested variances will not cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood. This is a modest addition. Both the east and the west side of the property are screened really well with mature vegetation. That's very tall. We've reached out to the neighbors. He wasn't able to get the neighbor to the west, but he was able to get the neighbor to the east, who didn't have any objections. But I don't know if he's... We gave him... We asked him to submit a letter, but it hasn't been submitted to the file. The benefit here cannot be achieved by some measure other than the pyramid variances. Due to the narrow width of the parcel and the fact that we need to connect the roof for the addition to the existing roof, there has to be some sort of encroachment on the easterly side. The variances here are not substantial. They're minor in nature. There will be no negative environmental impacts as a result of the application. This is a type 2 action under SECR. And the reason that we're asking for the variances is due to the pre-existing and non-conforming nature of the property and also the existing dwelling on the lot and its proximity to the lot lines. In order to build the second story and keep the addition consistent with the current architectural features of the house, the addition must pierce the pyramid in a de minimis fashion. The benefit to the applicant, we feel, greatly outweighs any detriment to the community.
Okay, John, this is yours. Do you want to...
When the variance, there's very little in the application about the initial variance that was given. Could you tell us what date it was given and how much pyramid relief was requested or granted?
Unfortunately, I don't have the amount of pyramid relief because the decision didn't have it in it. But I do have the date of the...
Well, does your client have plans for what they built?
I don't know if he actually asked for the variance, the initial one.
You said it was May 5, 2021. Okay, because it was cut off in our copy, but it didn't have, as she remarks, it didn't have what the actual pyramid relief was.
Yeah, I have the same concerns. I'd like to know what totality of the proposal will be.
2001. Yeah, because I'm like Barbara Labador was not the chairwoman.
I'm so sorry.
All right, sorry. 2001. Okay, okay.
My error.
Okay, so explain to me then, so they've had this variance for 20 some odd years. When did they build this property?
I don't know.
Because there's a certificate of occupancy dated May 15, 2024, so it was recently?
Yes. They bought the property recently. Is that what you're asking?
They bought the property recent... No, what I'm asking is there was a variance granted for pyramid relief in 2001.
Right.
We have a house that looks like it was recently... Recently, was it renovated or was it built, the second story addition? When was that put on?
I don't know. If we could ask Eric to come in.
It could also just be like an updated CO. You know, sometimes when they purchase the house, they update it.
It could. Well, that's what I'd like to know. That's what I'd like to know.
The 2024 CO says updated CO.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I believe that's when they purchased it.
I'd like to know when this... First of all, I'm going to have a very difficult time with this application. I'm looking at this as variance creep. I don't like the idea of coming back on multiple occasions and adding a little more and adding a little more and adding a little more. I'm usually okay with 200, 300 cubic feet of relief. That's fine with me. But I need to know how much was already granted because it does look like a significant amount was encroaching.
And but the date of that was 2001.
The date of the variance was 2001. When was the house built?
You're suggesting that they held the variance in abeyance and then they built it recently?
I have no idea. I don't have any information, and I'd like to know how much pyramid relief was actually granted.
All right, let's see if we get clarification from the architect. Is he coming on or the owners?
Yes.
Two of them, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Eric. Oh, hi, Jerry.
Hey, good evening. How are you?
All right, so are either of you attorneys?
No.
Okay, so let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Pierre Vincenzo Russo, 151 Church Lane, Bridgehampton, New York, 11932.
Okay, you're the owner.
I am.
Okay, and the other gentleman?
Eric Peterson, Architects, 8 Money Bog Lane, West Hampton Beach, New York, 11978.
Okay, can I swear you in? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Peterson, is it?
Oh, yeah, Owen.
Owen.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're asking about when the... There was a variance issued in 2001. When was the addition to and the actual pyramid built, the pyramid encroachment built? Do we know?
To my knowledge, the background here is that the house was built about 100 years ago. We were not aware of this. I was not aware of this variance that was incurred in 2001, when we bought the home a couple of years ago. Our understanding is that the work that was done was probably around the early 2000s period, but we don't have any data that was provided to us from the prior seller when we bought the home in 2022.
When you bought the... Already the second floor had been put on?
That's right. Yeah, we didn't do any work to the house since we purchased it.
Okay. Okay, so it's not really the same kind of variance creep that, you know, we often see. Because the point that Mr. Leonard was making is that people keep coming back for a second bite of the apple.
Of course.
And this is... It doesn't appear to be the case in this situation.
Right, but I still need to know how much pyramid relief was granted in the first go-round because shouldn't it be listed in the variance?
It's not, though.
It's not listed in the variance.
You can just codify the comment, but what you should have submitted was a finding of the decision. There's a statement that says a law was submitted by the applicant saying the volume of the area in violation of the pyramid had a goal of 804 cubic feet.
Okay, okay.
But I would still suggest codify, look at the plans, and make sure that's an accurate number.
Yeah, that that should be considered a submission for us.
That changes everything.
And the concern here, just to complete it, is we need to know what the total amount is because somebody else is going to come back and say, you know what, on this lot, this is the total amount of the relief that was granted, and we would like it, too.
Right.
So we need to know what the totality of the...
800 something plus the 200 something, so the total.
Plus three, it's three something, so it's like 1,100.
Yeah.
That's a different scenario. If it was like 2,700 cubic feet.
Correct.
That would be a different story for us.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think you're absolutely right.
This gentleman didn't build it.
No, I'm not faulting the owner or the architect or the attorney.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, because the point is well taken about, you know, variance creep. So it doesn't look like that's the case in this, and this is a modest addition. And the reason for the addition?
I'll let Eric answer that or the mayor.
Look, if it's all right for me to add, that just from looking at the drawings, it may be that the original variance request in 2002, if we're looking at the rear elevation, that on the left side, which is presently their bedroom, the second floor bedroom, is what I believe is not part of the original 100-year-old, you know, house, right? I believe that to the left of what we're adding or proposing to add is, if I had to guess, I would say that's probably where the variance was on the left side. And what we're looking to do is not add a bedroom, but rather expand just the primary suite for a bathroom and the walk-in closet. And it follows the, we'll say it's the, I believe it to be, the original 100-year-old house roof line, the hip, the four-square roof line. So the addition of the closet in the bathroom uses the pre-existing four-square easterly face of the roof, which we're asking to extend back, not in its full height. You can see the ridge drops lower out to cover the existing one-story portion of the house. So that's just my, if I had to guess what it was.
What I would like to see is a calculation of the total pyramid encroachment as it stands today, including what was pre-existing and what you're asking for now.
Prior variance in this one?
Yes. Well, not, I don't want to... The prior variance, it sounds like the findings said 800 cubic feet. I don't know if that's what was built. I would like a calculate... Like usually what we have in the architectural drawings is a calculation which includes a calculation of this is pre-existing and this is the new, what we're asking for. So would you be able to do that for us?
Yeah, no, I could look at it right now. If we look at that same eight...
No, I don't want you to look at it right now. I want you to actually do the calculations and say to us.
Yeah, I was going to give you... Yeah, I could produce the calculation right now if you'd like. It's a small amount.
That makes me a little loath to close the hearing, just because...
I honestly think this could be done with submissions.
I'm not sure. I don't feel that way.
Okay.
I'm going to be honest with you.
All right.
Because then we can't reopen it if we need to without a unanimous...
Always reopen it.
We can reopen it with a unanimous vote.
With unanimous vote.
Exactly.
And Susan?
Yeah, go ahead, Helen.
Can I just adjourn it and have all this information before us? And then we can speak about it, and the people can come back, and we can give them a relatively short adjournment.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a relatively short adjournment. That's one of the problems, but yes, we can definitely adjourn it.
If I was to tell you what the amount was, is in the next two minutes?
We need you to do the calculations and provide it to us.
In a written form.
In a written, like...
Okay.
On your return date.
At least, well, at least 10 days before, right, Candace?
Yeah, well, you have to submit your written comments in advance.
Sure.
Whatever the... All right, so is the feeling on the... A strong feeling on the board that it needs to come back? I know that there are two people...
I would be comfortable with submittal.
I'm comfortable with submittal.
I'd like them to come back.
I'd like them to come back.
Yeah, I think so, too. I don't want to get a pile of paper that no one read and somehow didn't get to, and we went, oops.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I would hope that every pile of paper you get, you're reading.
I think we are.
Question of how thoroughly and how completely.
Is it a threat to the board at this point from Kevin's comments?
Honestly, I don't know about you, but I'm reading every piece of paper that comes to me.
How foolish of me. Of course, we read every piece of paper we see.
When we get it, when we get it.
Okay. So, John, this is yours, but I mean, what dates are we looking at?
Audience...
Yes, all right. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 151 Church Lane? Anybody else on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 151 Church Lane?
No one.
Okay. All right, what date are we looking at?
2/5.
1/15?
We just put one on for 1/15.
14. 1/15 is out. 2/5.
2/5.
All right, all right. I personally would go with written.
I'm okay with the submissions. I really am.
Can we do a vote on that issue?
Katie, can we do a vote on written submissions versus...
Well, no, I would move for written... I would move to hold it open, and you can vote no.
And then what happens?
I don't know what happens after that.
Well, then if John wants to keep it open, he would make a motion to adjourn it to the next meeting, and then the board can vote no, and then you can say, close it with written submissions to such and such a date.
I think it's a significant thing. There's a... The entire pre-existing pyramid encroachment has not been documented for us in any way, shape, or form. So how can we sit here and say, oh, let's close the hearing, which assumes that it will be... The decision would be an approval pending what we see. And then we have to go through the whole thing of reopening it and then scheduling people to come back.
I don't feel that way because I think when we get submissions, we consider them, and if that influences our decision, we...
Then we have to...
No.
And...
And then people may have to come back, but we've had a representation from the architect. I have no reason to disbelieve it. And information from Candace that it's 800, and he's doing some quick math, and it doesn't seem unreasonable to me for what it's worth.
All right, so because it's such a small, a small thing, usually we don't...
Let's do 12/4.
Okay, well, let me give...
Sorry, you can get to it by 12/4, right?
Hold on.
I just want to be clear on what we're resubmitting. So we're just, we're resubmitting a plan that shows you the existing...
Which shows the pre-existing encroachment alongside the new encroachment.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to see.
So two different diagrams, one with the...
We could be on the same diagram, just a different class.
Sometimes they're often combined. Usually architects, when they're coming to us for pyramid relief, show the pyramid encroachment and go, this part is pre-existing and this part is new.
Right.
And they highlight the new part, and the pre-existing part is a separate calculation, but all within the same drawing. It's de rigueur at this point.
And then they tell us what the total is.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
I'm going to think back what I said.
No, don't.
I have to, unless she can have or the architect can have that information to me tomorrow or Monday morning.
Can you do that by Monday?
I just realized we have packages out by Wednesday.
Can you get by Monday morning, start, the architect?
Yes.
Okay, there's your answer.
All right, John, go ahead. Make the motion.
Okay, so I move to hold the application of Pierre Vincenzo Russo open for... Hold it open to December 4th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
No.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, material by Monday.
Okay, number five on the agenda, application of David Cronman and Rebecca Cronman, 64 Becky's Path, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-52-2-42.42. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback from 30 feet to 13.7 feet for a proposed addition that will connect the detached garage to the house and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address.
Shannon Bradley, 15 Cove Road, South Avenue, 11968.
Okay, Shannon, tell us about the application.
Okay. I'm the permit agent for David and Rebecca Cronman. Their property is located at 64 Becky's Path in Bridgehampton. The proposed project consists of attaching an existing one-story, single-car garage that is approximately 323 square feet to the principal structure by means of a proposed new enclosed breezeway. The breezeway is a... The breezeway is approximately eighty-six square feet. The intent is to apply for a building permit to change the newly attached garage into habitable space. So this is an area variance request, the applicant's request relief of three thirty-eleven for a rear yard setback to be reduced from thirty feet to thirteen point seven feet, totaling sixteen point three of requested relief. The subject premise is located at sixty-four Becky's Path, town of Southampton, County Suffolk, State of New York. It's identified as the Suffolk County map, tax map number nine hundred five-two dash two dash oh four two oh four two, and it's fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one square feet in an R-ten zoning district. The subject property consists of a single-family home, two stories with three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The property is a small lot conforming to the Seafarm North subdivision that was filed April third, nineteen eighty-seven, has map number eighty-two ninety-two, and it benefits from the R-ten zoning and with a cluster subdivision. It's a flag lot, so the total area of the lot's fourteen thousand four fifty-one square feet, the flag area is two thousand seven hundred eighteen square feet, and the lot area excluding the flag equals eleven thousand seven thirty-three square feet. It is a type-two action with SECR and, let's see. Just that the homeowners and I feel that we're requesting a very small and modest addition of only eighty-six square feet, which is the breezeway. So I just answer our application for this evening.
Okay, Julie, this is yours.
Yeah, so Shannon, can you just help me understand? The, any work being done on the garage itself is unrelated to the variance being requested, right? And does not require relief, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the relief is really limited to attaching this breezeway, and that's because since the garage is going to be modified and be living space, it would be nice to be able to walk through in a covered fashion to get to the main residence?
Right, and the relief that's necessary is you're changing an accessory structure to a principal, so the setbacks change. You have a difference in setbacks, and even though it's pre-existing, the garage, it now changes to a more strict setback, so we are requesting the relief in the amount of sixteen point three. It changes setback from accessory to a thirty-foot setback. And the flag lot also, it has, you know, the different, the interior lot has a front yard, you know, it's a little bit different than a regular lot, the setbacks and the, what's the front yard, the two sides of the rear, so it just turns out that this requires a sixteen point three feet of relief.
Okay, and that is considered the rear yard, the line that you're calculating off of?
Yes. Yes.
And what's the front?
Uh, the front.
Is it opposite it, or is it?
Yeah, it's opposite, so the rear there, it's, yes, it's opposite, and then the two sides, so when you come up the flag, that's one of the sides, the rear is where we're asking for relief.
And the people on what is Lot forty-eight on the survey?
Right.
Well, I mean, they may be here and have something to say, but have, have you heard anything from them?
I haven't heard anything, we did all our mailings and our posting, I haven't, I haven't been contacted, the homeowner that I know of hasn't been contacted, so I don't think anybody's here to.
But we'll ask.
Yeah, we'll ask, and can you just help me understand a little bit about the vegetation?
Sure.
That would be sort of in the vicinity of, I guess, the garage and the breezeway.
Now, the, most of the lots in the neighborhood are very nicely landscaped, some of them have older vegetation with the cedars and things that are indigenous, you know, in nature and species to the land. When that subdivision was, came into place, they had clearing, so they go, you do go by the aerial photographs, and it does have some restrictions for clearing, depending upon the size of the lot, I think that one's one to fifteen thousand square feet, so it's seventy-five percent clearing restrictions in APod. I do know that Seafarm, if, let me just, I mean, you could go back, they do get some relief on that, just because of different codes, you'd have to have, maybe Sean McDermott give the, analyze it and say what the final clearing would be for that, he would be the determination, you know, he would be able to determine that. Technically, it's seventy-five percent, and I think he is cleared, it's on the survey. He might be eight percent over that, but it doesn't mean that he has slight disturbance, or it isn't allowed because of the subdivision, and because of what it was, there's, I have the code, let me just read it real quick. The house was built in nineteen ninety, so the preliminary map of the subdivision is based on a topographic and prepared by GeoMaps International, utilizing aerial photograph, photographic methods. The mapping was prepared in the later part of the nineteen eighty-three, and was based on aerial photography dated preliminary of nineteen eighty-three, based on the edge of the vegetation depicted. So it's actually just telling you that you can refer to, it's an old field map, so the natural vegetation in the lot substantially disturbed was previous to when it was adopted, the APod. So he would get probably a ten percent grace if, if it was analyzed, I guess, properly, and he, Anthony might be able to comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we're going to the abyss.
Here's the, here's the question, is this thing buffered? I think that's the question, are there trees surrounding this thing?
It looks from this picture that that's, it's a highly vegetated site, if I'm seeing it correctly.
You are seeing it correctly, but I think I have a different picture, if you just let me go through this really quick.
Thank you for.
Yeah, this is actually, I think that might have been, this, I only have one, but this is actually a better picture of. I think the picture that, I think it's more scarce than what you think, I don't know if it's a different seasonal, that that's winter, more winter.
Yeah, it looks less, much less vegetated.
But that's, you know, it does also show that the neighboring properties, it's all basically the same, I drove through there just to make sure, and when I posted the signs, it's pretty similar, each house.
No, it does look that way, okay.
How many bedrooms did you say?
It's three bedrooms, two bath.
All right, so your parking requirements are two spots.
Parking requirements are one over three bedrooms, so four, I believe? Is it four?
No, it's that one, it's, I think it's two, if you have three bedrooms, it's two parking spaces, is that correct?
It was one on there, okay.
So, but I don't see where the parking spaces are, you're eliminating the garage, so where would they be?
Parking spaces on his property, when you come in, it's a little bit wider towards the end, so.
I think you need to note that on the, on the survey, where the parking spaces would be.
Okay.
Don't we usually ask that, Katie?
Sure. If you're eliminating the garage.
We're eliminating the garage, so you need to, you need to come up with where, where your parking spaces will be.
And it's gonna be a bedroom, Shannon, in the garage?
No, it's, it's listed as a den, a bathroom, I believe there's a little bit of storage, and that should be it.
Oh, so it's just a living area?
Yeah, it's just habitable space, it's a family, it's, you know, husband, wife, a couple of kids.
So we're not adding any parking requirements?
Are you asking for additional vegetation?
Screening.
I, I think some screening is called for, it seems like it would be reasonable, it's a little hard to tell from that picture, because it seems like it's winter. The, this photograph looks a little like it was AI-generated or something.
It's probably AI-generated by, I mean, I didn't, AI-generated, but I don't know, it was one of the pictures that I was pulled off of actually GIS, so.
I mean, this makes it look like it's a very vegetated area.
That does, I have to, I completely agree with you.
And if it's not, it sounds like there's some sentiment for some vegetation.
I think that there is sentiment for us, because we are making the conversion, and it's, it's dramatically coming closer to the property line, we definitely should see some screening.
Okay, but just the breezeway, not coming closer, nothing's being moved closer to the property?
I understand, but because it's now constitutes a principal as opposed to an accessory, you are changing it in some ways, and we have the, we have an ability to ask you to do that, so. So having that ability, we often like to pursue that, so I think we'd need a new survey which would show both the landscaping and the parking.
Can I get a couple of thoughts in?
Yes, of course. Yeah.
Just a couple of things, it looks like you're, if I read the package right, you're trying to keep the garage roof, and you're trying to, you have to do a renovation under the garage roof, which looks like you're pulling the floor up in the garage, and you're, you're gonna have to run plumbing to the septic system.
Correct.
Right? So the septic system is under the deck a little bit, and a single ring looks like it's under the deck. Do you know if you have to do an upgrade for, for new technology?
Suffolk County Health Department, reference number, they don't technically have to upgrade, you know, they're not required to do so, they were gonna link in from, you know, just like you had said.
Yeah, rip the garage floor up.
Right, because they're not adding any bedrooms, and they're just gonna do that eighty-six square foot breezeway. It is gonna go underneath, and this, the septic is there, would remain.
Man.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on sixty-four Becky's Path? Anybody on Zoom?
No one.
Julie, this is yours, I think we're gonna need some written submission, but I think we can.
So I, I move to close the public hearing, keep it open for written submissions until twelve-five, which I'm assuming is okay for you?
Yes, so that, that just, that means that I, I have the survey redone for the screening that you're requesting, the parking spaces that show for two, two vehicles?
Right.
And screening parking spaces.
I think that's it.
And that's it.
The parking spaces just show all of the required parking.
It should show all of the required parking on the survey, okay.
Right, well, it's two spaces, correct?
I don't know how many spaces we need, they've lost two.
They lost one, they lost one because it was a one-car garage.
It was only one car garage. Gotcha.
So it's like, yeah, whatever it is, if you need two, you gotta find two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and we will have this on calendar for a decision on twelve eighteen.
Second.
Mr., Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, number, thank you, number seven on the agenda.
Decision twelve eighteen.
Twelve eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, did you say fifteen?
No, it's twelve eighteen.
Number seven on the agenda, the application, modification request of Blue Horseshoe Funding LLC, seventeen Ocker Lane, Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash two eleven dash two dash twenty-one. On June twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen, by decision number D zero one eight zero seven six, this board granted an accessory distance from street setback for a proposed swimming pool and a variance to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required front yard. By letter dated September twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, Lisa Zalaga, architect for the owner, is requesting relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to modify said decision for the location of a proposed swimming pool with attached spa, one. Town Code Section three thirty dash eleven Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from frontline, front lot line setback of forty-five feet where ninety feet is required from the private road, AKA new lane, an accessory side yard setback of twenty-three feet two inches where thirty feet is required from the west property line, and an accessory side yard setback of twenty-three feet six inches where thirty feet is required from the east property line, and two, Section three thirty dash seventy-six D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Section three thirty dash eighty-three yards to allow the proposed swimming pool with attached spa to be located within the required front yard.
Board has jurisdiction.
So quick. Let me swear you in. Do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, please.
Please state your name and address.
Lisa Zalaga, architect, thirteen seventy-five North Sea Road, Southampton, New York, one one nine six eight.
Okay, Lisa, tell us why you're back.
So, as, as was suggested, there, there was a variance for the previous owner that granted a sixteen by twenty-eight swimming pool in what's considered a front yard. So this property is on Ocker Lane, it's in the Art District, up just west of Southampton Village, and the, there is a private road, also known as New Road, uh, New Lane, that is on the backside of this property, so it's, it's basically a through lot. And I, one of the things I submitted is an aerial photo that shows there's, there's basically, you know, five, six lots, I guess six lots, that have the same situation, two of which actually have three front yards. So the, the original variance granted a sixty-two point three foot setback off of this private road, and a twenty-two point seven foot side yard setback on the east side. That placed the swimming pool about thirteen and a half feet off of the existing porch, which, when you then throw in the steps to get down off the porch, you know, we laid out the swimming pool with the pool contractors, we got a building permit for it, we were gonna do it, and it was really, really tight, it was like you fall off the porch and into the pool. And my client was interested in getting a hot tub, or spa, which the, the northern edge of the proposed swimming pool was shown basically at the ninety-foot setback from this private road. I was, in my thinking, under the impression that the spa could actually go on the north side, but then it was pointed out to me by the building department that that was still in technically a required front yard, and therefore would require a variance also. Putting the spa that close to the house basically meant that you really just jumped right into the spa. So we started looking at the, the neighboring properties, and the neighbor to the immediate west was granted in two thousand and one, two thousand twenty-one, sorry, fifteen by twenty-seven foot swimming pool, forty-five feet off of that private road. The neighbor, the next neighbor to the west, which is the neighbor that actually has three front yards, they were granted two variances in nineteen eighty-seven, they received a variance to have a sixty-three point six foot where ninety feet is required front yard from Briar Lane, that's the, the third street front, and forty-five point five feet from the private road that we're talking about, New, New Road, New Lane, as well as a side yard variance of twenty-five point five feet. So they also received a variance to put a garage ten feet off of this private road. The neighbor to the east, thirteen Ocker Lane, in two thousand and two, they were granted, the board ordered, the, the building inspector to issue a pre-existing certificate of compliance for an existing swimming pool that was located zero feet off of the adjoining property line. They have since come back to this board in two thousand and twenty-four, and they have, they were granted pyramid relief and setback relief to, to, I, I think they knocked the house down, so it originally said to do an addition, but I think that they've come back to, to do a new house, but I don't have that information. The new house, the, the existing house collapsed, and so they now are trying to build a new house. Again, the next neighbor to the east received seven variances for a new residence in two thousand and seventeen, and then the following neighbor to the east received one variance for a swimming pool seventy-one point five feet from the private road. So basically, when we looked at it, all of the houses in the neighborhood have swimming pools. The, the board has granted the forty-five feet off of this private road, you know, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, the house has a pre-existing CO. There's really nothing they can do, this property has been upzoned three times. It was upzoned in, it was upzoned, it was in B-zone in nineteen fifty-seven, it was upzoned to R forty in nineteen seventy-two, and R sixty in nineteen eighty-three. So we were hoping that the board would allow us to modify this zoning board application from a sixty-two point three feet setback off of the private road for that swimming pool, maintaining the same size swimming pool that was originally proposed, and give us forty-five feet to an eight by eight hot tub, and fifty-three point something feet to, to the, fifty-three point six feet to the proposed swimming pool. We're trying to turn the swimming pool so that it goes east and west as opposed to north and south, which will give us a little more setback from the existing residence.
I'm, I'm just a little confused, am I looking at the right?
Which one?
Am I looking at, this is.
That's the proposed.
This is the proposed, so, and the setback for the pool would be sixty-two point three feet?
No, that, that, if you look at that, that setback's going to the original.
Oh, I see, okay, so that's going here, okay, so what's the, the setback?
So the forty-five feet is to the spa.
It's the spa, but where is the thing to the pool?
Fifty-three feet, further down, it kind of runs through the shed, fifty-three foot six inches.
Oh, all right, okay, I was just having trouble finding that, okay, yeah, that was a little bit mysterious, okay, thank you.
So, and so the, you know, the original setback on the side property line that was granted by this board was twenty-two point seven feet, and. And we're, we're at twenty-three foot six. So we've actually got a greater setback on the east side, but we are requesting some relief on the west side to turn.
Did you see the builder's comments? I mean, the building department comments?
No, I did not. What did they say?
Okay, because they said that if you could show single and separate ownership from nineteen fifty-seven to date, the accessory side yard setbacks would not be required.
Okay.
The variance.
That's interesting because the.
That's what they said. Did you, did you not get them, Marjorie Riley?
No, I did not see that. I apologize. The original, it was originally, when they originally came to the previously granted variance had, they gave a single and separate ownership back to nineteen forty-eight. So the original variance, yet they still were required to get a side yard variance.
I'm reading the notes from the building department. I think that, I mean, Katie, if they have single and separate, then the side yard variances are modified by point four. I think it's point four, right?
Point four?
Yeah, I think the side yard for accessory is.
So I've got point four seventy-five?
No, it's based on, it's based on lot area. Based on lot area.
Subtext for accessory structures is based on lot size in Section one fifteen.
Okay.
So is this something they should be considering? They should be looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So you need to take a look at that.
Lisa, just answer your question. Depends on what the, who's the initial variance though?
The initial variance was.
Sixty, what year?
Twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen, and they gave a single and separate back to nineteen forty-eight, but they still were granted.
I don't know, I don't, it depends on when that code section was changed. That code section wasn't always there for the reduction for the accessory structures. So it may have been after that variance.
After twenty eighteen?
Possibly, not a hundred percent sure, but possibly.
But I think it's worth pursuing so that we don't have to, you don't have to go through the room roll trying to get a variance for a side yard. So that would be something you should explore. Helen, this is yours. Do you want to say, start off the conversation or?
I, I have a couple of concerns. First of all, the original case was eight years ago. And when somebody gets a variance eight years ago and then comes in and wants to add a spa, they're not just making little alterations, they're adding a new building. I, I have a problem calling this a modification. I do not consider it a modification. I think of it as an application. It should be a new application because, and that, that's my most important statement. I mean, I have all the numbers, you know, the sixty-two point three, the what, forty-five, the fifty-three point six. And, but it would not really, for me, the most important issue is why this is called a modification. And I'll see some of the other members if they have any concerns about that too.
I don't, but that's just me. I see it as a modification. It's an addition, but it's a modification. I mean, we're really going to treat it the same as if it's a new application, aren't we, Katie? I mean, what's the distinction?
The distinction, I mean, to be clear, the distinction is really just the fee that, how it comes in.
The fee?
Yes, because we still advertise, we still make the post, we still do all of those requirements, you know. Typically, typically, you know, I mean, if the board wanted it to be a new application, I mean, I guess, you know, you could kick it back, but I mean, we do have a full application here. I think, I think typically Candace and I say to the applicants, it seems like a modification to us. It's pretty similar. Nothing was built, you know, et cetera. You run the risk of the board saying it's a new application. But I think the difference, especially with this one, is you can see you have all the information. Sometimes on a modification, you literally just get a letter.
The issue for me is.
Is this advertised?
Yeah.
The modification was advertised?
Advertised, posted in mail.
Okay.
And that, that was a policy change that the board made a couple of years ago. We used to just let modifications come in and talk to the board and then the board, the board at the time was like, we need to let neighbors know about any, any change.
If, if it was just a matter of turning the pool, which I actually like, you know, that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it, it's the addition, I think that's, that's the question, the addition of the hot tub and the addition of relief required that's associated with it. I don't think it, I think it's, it's a point to note, but I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on it. And, and, you know, I, I just wondered if a hot tub could be in a place that was less encroaching further on a setback either in the corner, on, you know, either of the, you know, in between the pool and the house proposal. I understand the point you made earlier about, you know, not wanting to walk off the deck and fall in the hot tub, but, you know, that might not happen on the corner if that was at all possible. I'm, I'm just throwing it out because I'm trying to minimize the setbacks. And the reason behind it is, in your analysis of who got setbacks, forty-five feet was the closest.
And that was to the swimming, that was to a full-on pool. This is just an eight by eight spa.
And this would be the second one and then everybody's going to say, I want what those two got.
Actually be the third one.
Well, right, so, so I'm, I'm, you know, I don't, I don't want to have, you know, the equivalent of an arms race of who can get to the fence, you know, who can get to New Lane the fastest, right? So if there's a way to accommodate that, I'd ask that be considered.
But it seems to me, getting to the single and separate issue might obviate the need entirely for this conversation. And so I, wouldn't that be the first step?
Only as to the side yard, not to the rear.
Side yards.
To the side yard.
Yeah.
Not to the, not to the setbacks.
So there's, is there any?
And Susan, can I reiterate the, the part about the eight years? I think if it was eight months, but if we do it eight months, eight years, so somebody can come in in fifteen years and say, oh, I want a, where does it stop?
But Helen, it's not, it, there's no different treatment. They've put in a full application. So I'm not sure I'm understanding your objection.
It would be a longer wait. There would be fees involved. There are different things for modifications versus, and maybe we, we should know about that more specifically. But I, I have heard that there are definite differences. And so maybe if it was a new application, she might have had to wait a year or two. But no, she says, oh, it's a modification. Oh, modification, okay, we can put you in pretty quick because it's, it's a small little nothing. Well, this is not a small little nothing by adding that spa. Maybe she wasn't adding the spa, but she wanted to move something here or something there. I, I would have less problems with it.
Okay, Helen, let's just get back to the application.
Yeah. Katie, that is part of my comments on the application. Excuse me.
Candace wanted to make a comment. Go ahead, Candace.
I wanted to just clarify, so that, that code section actually came in two thousand and nine. But if you look at the previous variance that you referenced, they didn't request relief for the side yard, but that might be why they submitted the single and separate search. They had.
But they granted them a variance for the side yard.
The variance from two, the, what year was this?
Thousand and eight.
The variance from two thousand and eighteen, where they granted the accessory distance from the street from sixty-two point three, sixty-two point three when ninety was required and relief to allow the pool to require front yard. That's all that's listed.
Oh, did they just ask for it and then they didn't have to?
They probably didn't.
They didn't have to deal with it.
Because they submitted the single and separate.
Maybe that's what it was.
So probably you don't have to worry about the single and separate.
No, 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 she does. In order, in order to not ask for relief for the side yard, I'm the same to her, yes.
Have to submit.
Submit the single and separate.
Yes, okay, right, right. But I'm saying, if you do submit it, I don't think you're going to have a problem.
Do you know what the side yards are allowed to be in?
Whatever it is that already says they're compliant.
It's like point four of the total width of the property.
No, it's not forty-four.
What's the size of the property? If you're less than thirty-nine thousand nine ninety-nine, it'd be ten.
Ten feet.
We have thirty.
That's the minimum.
No, she's asking for the, if she does the single and separate search.
Oh, if she does.
If it's deemed single and separate, the accessory side yard setbacks are reduced according to the size of the property, the square foot of the property.
Right, right, right. Oh, I thought you were saying what is required.
Zero or thirty-nine thousand nine ninety-nine, it's ten foot side and rear. That may not help you with your plot.
And I would need a single and separate back to nineteen fifty-seven?
Back to the ZB, the, well, the prior ZBA decision doesn't say single and separate, right?
No, it doesn't.
Yes, prior to fifty-seven.
So why can't the swimming pool be situated, the northern, that's the north, right? Why can't the northern part of the, of the swimming pool in this configuration be just moved down to the northern part of what the original layout was? And then, how far away, I mean, if that were the configuration, how far away is the porch? I mean, it just seems to me like there still would be a lot of room.
We were trying to have, like, the, the original, the original proposal didn't show any terrace at all around the proposed pool. So we were trying to create, you know, a seating area on the south side of the swimming pool.
Right. How far above the, how far above the ground is the current porch?
The porch is two steps down, I believe.
Okay, so there's steps?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a railing?
No, no, I could need a railing.
Okay, is it two steps that compose the entire porch or is it like there's a?
They come off the center. They come off the center of the porch.
So it could go two steps down to the patio and then you have the pool.
John, are you suggesting that this dotted line that's in the middle of the pool, if they were to move the, the northern edge of the pool to that dotted line, it would come down a little bit? Yes, right, it would come down a little bit then.
Move the spa over, flip the spa or on the side.
Because if you're not going to have a side yard setback issue, you could move the spa on the side.
Extend the pool patio to the steps and at least, because I don't love the, the relief you want in the rear yard. I don't love it. I have to admit that. I don't.
I mean, the neighbor having forty-five feet, I kind of thought it was an acceptable request.
I know, but these were, you know.
So, all right, so the suggestion, Lisa, for you to consider with your client is moving the pool down to where the northern part of the original was. So it shifts down like, I don't know, maybe six feet or whatever it is. And then possibly locating the spa on the side.
Or, you know, imagine what that, you know, play with it.
Yeah, play with it.
So the pro, I mean, and I'm not arguing with you, but the problem with moving the spa to one end or the other is some, two of you were out there, right? Two of you?
I was there.
Okay.
There.
You saw how the, the, the retaining walls and the, and the fences, and you can see them on the survey, are really, really set in on this property. Like, the property is actually larger than it appears because of, of these retaining walls that were, were built, you know, several feet into the property. So I'm just afraid that putting the hot tub on one end or the other is going to get really, really close to those retaining walls that, and I, and again, this was a previous owner that did this, but they're really encroaching into our property, which would mean that we would have to cut down all those mature trees that are to the east side in order to gain that space. So that's my only concern.
Well, on the east side, you, you have the original patio and that's a ten-foot width and the spa is eight by eight.
All right, well, we don't have to, yeah.
And then the other, you know, I, I couldn't do this on the site, but the, you know, the, as you know, that the, as you get closer to New Lane and just before the fence, the level topography that's, that's cut, it just drops off by, you know, six feet easily. And, you know, I was wondering, you know, if you, with the spa and the proposed location, how close are you to, to that being a fairly unstable location also?
Right, and, and I've talked to the client about that and we would basically level out to the spa and then we would, and then we would maintain a slope down. We may, there was talk about whether there would be a retaining wall at, at the street or not, but not certain, I mean, four feet would be the max that you could do anyway, but we were trying not to do that at all.
You could also flip the spa to the other side and put it either to the right or to the left, flush with the east or west side.
Well, how would the board, how would the board feel? How would the board feel about leaving the pool at the fifty-three and a half feet, which is, you know, nine feet closer than the original variance, and putting the spa on one end or closer to the, to the house? And that would just be a conversation between us. In other words, not the forty-five feet to the spa, but maintaining the fifty-three foot six to the pool so that we'd get a little bit of relief from the existing setback. That would be fifty-three and a half feet as opposed to sixty-two feet.
Two point three.
So, you know, it's what, eight, eight and a half feet.
And you would relocate the spa?
And relocate the spa.
Okay. Well, you've got a couple of different options to discuss with the client.
Okay.
I don't think that we can give you a decision tonight on, we'd like to take a look at it. We'd like you to talk to your client.
I'd like to see you keep the variance you have, to be honest with you. I'd like you to, I'd like to see you, as I suggested, move the northern portion, the northern boundary of the pool to the northern boundary of the original pool layout and flip the spa to the other side, either on the right or the left. And you can extend the patio to the porch and be done with it and then deal with the single and separate.
Okay, well, let me get the single and separate.
Okay. You know, everybody on the board's going to have different opinions on it, but, you know, I think what you should do is give it your best shot, come back with what you feel is your best argument and, and we will consider it. I mean, some of us may have problems with it and some of us may not, so.
Anybody else have anything?
I just don't see why the hot tub doesn't get flipped to the other side. There's plenty of room here for that.
Well, that was what I said. If I, if I were to leave the pool where I'm, where I'm requesting it at fifty-three and a half feet and move the spa so that it was either on one end or closer to the house, would that be acceptable?
They use it in the winter. They don't have to walk to it. That's still far enough away from the house at that point.
Yeah. I mean, that's definitely an alternative. Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on seven Ocker Lane? Anybody who wishes to be heard?
There's one person on Zoom.
Okay, Helen, I think this.
He's got one person, one person?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a person?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Terry, but we can't see you.
Okay, thank you. I will fix that. The screen just came on. Thank you. Okay.
There you are. Are you an attorney?
I am not.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Teresa M. Stone, twenty-five New Lane, Southampton, one one nine six eight.
Okay. What would you like to say, Terry?
I appreciate the conversation that we just heard because much of the conversation is in line with what our family and our neighbors would like to see happen. I think for those of you who perhaps haven't visited this particular site, the Art Village has two roads that are parallel. There's Ocker Lane, which is the address of the, the house in question, and there's New Lane, which is, if you will, kind of the back road. But on that back road, there are six homes. And our yard is the backyard of the Ocker Lane. How the backyards of the Ocker Lane homes are configured and used because that's our front yard. So I just think that's just important context and it's just a little unusual about this neighborhood. We're concerned about moving, getting, getting these auxiliary structures within the desired amount of forty-five feet with the road. We would propose that the previous variance, which was granted, be the footprint that's approved. And if a spa is approved in addition to that previous footprint, that be placed at someplace other than closer to the road than the pool. And this has to do with a number of things, including noise. In this neighborhood, there has been experience of noise from neighboring pools and the like. And the other has to do with this complication that was discussed here about the slope of the property. This particular property has quite a, a, a major slope from where the back of the house is to the, to New Lane. And there had to be retaining walls and all that sort of thing to get the property ready for the original proposed placement of the pool. And they, you know, butt against the sides and, and in addition to that, you know, there's the drainage and appearance of those of us for whom New Lane is the front road. When you have that kind of a slope, there's a drainage issue and there's also an appearance issue. So it's a lovely, very unusual little tucked-away neighborhood. So it's a lovely, very unusual little tucked-away neighborhood in Southampton. And we would like to retain as much of that character as it can. And would like to have the, as I say, would like to have the board consider sticking with the original 2018 approved variance.
Okay, thank you, Terry. I think her comments are in line with trying to get as far away from New Lane as you can. So, you know, we talked about options. I think you have to give some very serious consideration to that. Okay? And flipping the spa clearly is one of them. And I assume because it is their front yards on the other, what are you planning in terms of, like, a screening on any of that fence?
Right. And like I said, there currently is, there's a hedge there now with a, with a little bit of a parking, little one car spot parking lot. And, I mean, I was planning on the hedge staying. If we did raise grade a little bit, obviously, that hedge would, would be hiding a retaining wall, and we could plant on top of the retaining wall as well, so.
So maybe you would consider some, did you make that? Okay, so I think-
The prior variance actually referred to a landscaping plan, so you might want to pull that and see what that was.
So, so maybe, did you, did you actually implement the landscaping plan or not?
Well, probably not, because it wasn't, nothing was built.
Nothing was built. Right, so we should probably take a look at what the, okay.
And I would maybe just add on that. As you can see on the, on the plan, there is a pre-existing shed that's there. And beside that is this driveway, not driveway, but a place where cars sometimes are parked. And the reason I talk about drainage and that sort of thing, it's usually a mud hole. So some kind of landscaping and treatment of that parking space, if it's going to be used as a parking space, would really improve the site as we come by the lot, as we're going to our home.
Okay, so you should take a definite look at the planting plan from the previous variance and maybe come up with some additional ideas. Okay, is there anybody else on Zoom?
No one else.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate having the chance to speak.
Oh, well, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Helen, this is yours, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to adjourn it for a while.
That's right.
Okay. So I guess we're going to look at February fifth. All right, well, we can do February nineteenth.
I'll zoom in from Mexico.
Okay. All right, all right. Helen, do you want to make a motion?
We're going to adjourn this case to February nineteenth. Leave it, leave it open.
February fifth.
February fifth.
February fifth?
Yes. Second.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Macedonia?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Chair outside. Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Number ten on the agenda, application of Lynn Leahy, fifteen Tarpon Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six two dash four dash eight.
Hello. No, I don't have to swear you in, because you have been sworn in before.
Rumors.
I just need to get my papers. Can you? But for the record, just please identify yourselves.
Fifteen Tarpon Road, East Quogue.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning.
All right, so where are we?
So we had reopened this back in September. Maybe it was October. Anyway, we had another discussion. The board asked us to go back to the drawing board one more time. So we have done that, and we submitted plans a couple of weeks ago that are further reduction in the amount of pyramid requested for the project. The entire house was brought in first and second floor by nine inches, which further reduced the pyramid by an additional six hundred and fifty-six point eight cubic feet, which ends up being sixty-three percent reduction from the first proposal on the project. So after four revisions, we've reduced it by sixty-three percent from our original ask. And the amount that we're asking for now is one thousand eight hundred ninety-four cubic feet in total, which equates to nine hundred and forty-seven cubic feet on either side of the house.
Eighteen oh four, you said?
Eighteen ninety-four. The, the head heights of the shed dormers that were proposed, and I think the second iteration, have not changed. They're still at the minimum, absolute minimum of six foot eight. And then they open up into cathedral ceilings for the majority of the second floor. So-
What are the height of those? What are the heights of those? Cathedral ceilings?
Ceilings? Well, they're within the roof line. That does not need a pyramid variance. So I don't know what that, what heights are, but they're within that.
What's the height of the building now?
It is twenty-two feet. No, I can't read it. It's like those times. I think it's twenty, about twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Okay, do you remember? Okay. So the height of the building is twenty-six.
It looks like twenty-five feet ten above three.
No, I understand, but I just, you know, honestly, I can't read, you know, it's like, it's a little blurry.
Yeah, so that's, it's twenty, it's just under twenty-six feet. We're allowed thirty-two.
Okay. All right. Well, I, from my point, I would say that I appreciate very much the enormous amount of effort that you have put into this application. And, you know, I think you've, you know, really responded to the board on numerous occasions. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit challenging because it seems like, you know, there was a lot asked in the beginning, and then it's whittled away and whittled away. So there's a little bit of, you know, feeling like, you know, you know, maybe we should have moved this along a little bit quicker. But so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to everybody to have a comment, and we'll move on from there.
I'll start. I don't think this is enough. I'm looking at the second floor. That's where the issue is. The issue is the dormers. And I'm looking at the second floor. We have three bedrooms en suite with dedicated baths and walk-in closets, along with a laundry room and a walk-in linen closet. And that's where all the relief is. And I'm not sure that we need, I mean, I know we've said we haven't had enough guidance. So you know what? I mean, clearly, the message is being lost. I think this is too much, especially for this neighborhood where there's, like, one, one variance years ago. And I think this, what's being asked for in this sets a precedent for us moving forward. And I think we need to be very careful about that. And I'd like to see, you know, this second floor needs to be reconfigured, in my opinion. I don't think you need three en suite bedrooms with dedicated baths and walk-in closets. I think that's, considering the fact of what the character of the neighborhood is and what the reality on the ground is in terms of the absolute lack of variance relief anywhere in the surroundings, except for one application. So I've, I don't know.
Okay.
Two bedrooms with a, with a shared bath, a Jack and Jill? I mean, I'm at the point where I'm just going to start saying what I think needs to happen.
Okay. And that's fair, John, and you can do that.
Yeah. And I think that that would allow you to keep your, your master or your primary and then, you know, and then come more into line.
Okay. Anybody else who wishes to comment?
I'm going to disagree with John. I think the house did a good job on fitting the neighborhood. I think the house fits the neighborhood. So for me, I think you did a good job on it. I understand there's some relief there, but I disagree totally. I think that house, after spending some time in that neighborhood, I think it's a house that's actually fitting for the neighborhood. But I'm only one guy, and it doesn't really mean it much, so.
So I'll go. This is the best thing we've seen so far. And I, I know you don't want to hear this, but I'm inclined to agree with John on this. You know, I do worry about what we decide here and what the implications are for the precedent that others are going to come and ask us. I know that's not necessarily a concern of yours so much. That's our problem. But we have to consider it, and we have to be mindful of it as we go forward. And, you know, if, if it was one bedroom that needed this kind of relief, that's one thing. But, but there's a lot of extra space that is, you know, our job is to grant for reasonable relief with the minimum necessary. And the case can be made that you can get a little more efficiency in the space up there, which is where the problem is. And this is a concern not just here, but it's in other places where we see the same issues. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that consideration.
So just to remind you, the one variance that we did provide was from 2023, so it's extremely recent. And it was for five thousand and twelve cubic feet. We have greatly reduced this. We were at almost fifty-eight hundred cubic feet, and we're now under two thousand cubic feet, which is-
That's one, and the rest of the neighborhood is a single-story house.
There was another variance. However, I had told you at the last meeting that that variance was more than ten years old, so I didn't think it was viable. So you're talking about precedent. You don't want to set a precedent, but I'm telling you about a variance that was granted very recently. I'm not asking for that amount any longer, but I don't know.
Right, but I think that we have to think about it in terms, like, when we say that we are preserving the character of the community, it's not just whether the house looks like other houses in the neighborhood. It's about whether we are going to embark on a journey of granting variance relief, which, and especially with regard to the pyramid law, which increases mass. And when you increase mass within a neighborhood, the neighborhood swiftly changes. And that's what we have to be careful about. We're protecting, we're here to protect the character of the community.
No, you're here to balance. It's not protecting. It's balancing the benefits of the applicant versus the detriment to the character of the neighborhood.
Right. And I think that granting almost two thousand cubic feet of relief is opening the door. It's opening-
Okay, John, you've made your comments. Let's go.
I'm fine with it. I agree with Mr. Rebhan. I appreciate the efforts put in. It's greatly reduced. I actually like the design you come up with. And wish you luck.
Julie, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, so I think this process has been a struggle. So I think that's part of what you're hearing from people, because you started so high. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing anyone. I'm just saying this process, and it could be as much on our side as yours. I don't know. It doesn't matter. But you started with such a large request, and on several occasions, it got winnowed down. So now you are in a great, greatly reduced place. I struggle a little bit to know how I would have acted if you had come in initially and asked for eighteen hundred square feet, but we are where we are. I, I think it's a lot, and I worry, I mean, Katie, I hear you about the balance, but I worry a lot, are we opening floodgates in this neighborhood? But I also, frankly, I put a bunch of credence in John Rebhan's view as a builder, you know, that you've done something that is fitting with the neighborhood. And so I think I can get myself there.
Helen, do you want to comment?
The only comment I have is that this has been on five times. If we're going to come from the direction of minimum, asking for minimum, then why was it, why did it take five times to get down to nineteen hundred and eighty-seven feet? Is this going to be how other people are going to view it? Okay, I'm going to, and I've spoken to Daphne on many, many occasions of coming in on the six thousand feet, and, oh, I got it down to this, and then I got it down to that, and then I got it down. Well, that, that isn't something how I would like to see applicants conduct themselves. I like them to come in with a number, the real number, that they know is going to be acceptable, or almost acceptable, and not what we're seeing so that we have case after case adjourned, adjourned, unadjourned. That's my piece on that.
I'm going to give you my comments. I think you've done a very good job. I agree with John. I think that it's, it is concerning that people will come in and ask for pyramid relief. I think that that's going to happen. I think it's going to happen time and time again. People are living out here more, you know, regularly. They're maintaining homes out here not in a, you know, temporary, you know, May to August kind of consideration anymore. And we're going to see these. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an area that's in transition. And, you know, we'll try to keep it as best we can within reason, and I think you've come to that point. So that's my comments. And before we finish, I just want to ask, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on fifteen Tarpon Road?
Can I say one other thing?
All right.
Unless I'm wrong, I think hearing that Daphne said, I need guidance. Well, I hope from this hearing that she has gotten sufficient guidance so that in future applications, she can use this information to help guide her and therefore guide her clients in how the hearing has to be conducted.
I think she's heard you, Helen. Thank you.
I'm going to say in Daphne's defense as well, her, her guidance, and again, it may not have been persuasive to the board, but Daphne's guidance was in 2023, the board granted five thousand cubic feet of pyramid relief. So I just, we don't need to lambaste the applicants or their agents. I mean, people are doing the best they can. And Helen, I know, I know, I sense your frustration, but I can guarantee these applicants are frustrated as, as well. Nobody wants to come back to this board six different times. So, I mean, whatever the board's going to decide, I just, we need to be fair to everyone.
I agree.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to be heard? Okay, we're going to, we're going to set this for a decision.
I just want to say one last thing, just to remind the board that we also have shown on here screening, significant screening on either side of the house to try to soften things for the relief. And that, we have no issue with that being a condition of any decision should there be an appeal.
Okay, John, this is yours. So we're going to close.
Are we going to close for, close?
Right. Written comments until?
So it's going to be the same thing? It's going to be, we're going to close and written comments for twelve-five? A decision for twelve-eighteen.
Second.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Macedonia?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
No.
Mr. McDonald? Ms. Burgess? Okay, Chair outside. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, number eleven on the agenda, holdover application, nine-eleven Flanders Road LLC and thirty-nine Flanders Road LLC. Nine-eleven and thirty-nine Flanders Road Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one-three-eight dash two dash thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
All right, so can you just state your name, please, for the record?
Yes.
You've been sworn in.
I'm an attorney.
And I don't have to swear you in?
Just one of years ago.
Andrew Sleepway.
Andrew, we swore you in last time, right? Yes, okay.
Andrew, just play last name for me again.
S is in Sam. L E, he is in Peter, or Y.
Okay, thank you.
And just state your name for the record.
Sir Keith Brown, from law firm, Sutillman Ballin, ninety Merrick Road, East Meadow, New York.
Okay. And did I swear you in?
No. My name is Chris Tartaglia. No.
Okay, okay, so let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Chris Tartaglia, that's T-A-R-T-A-G-L-I-A with High Point Engineering, 1860 Walt Whitman Road, Melville, New York 11747.
Okay. So where are we on this? I know that you've been to planning, and where is planning on this application? Keith, you want to tell us? Okay, go ahead.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to see everyone again. You may recall when we were last here on September 18th for a public hearing, the matter was adjourned at the conclusion of that hearing until tonight to allow the planning board to conclude its secret review, which had been ongoing for the last three and a half to four years. On October 16th, the town planning board issued a conditional neg deck, and I have a copy of it here, based on two conditions. One, the removal of the Welcome to Riverside portion of the ground sign. You may recall that that was an issue that the community wanted, so we removed it. And second, to remove a second, sorry, a third canopy sign that was redundant. Since that time, we met with the Flanders Riverside Civic Association and was asked to demolish the remaining structures that are on the property today. I'm happy to report, after speaking with my client, that they have agreed to demolish the remaining structures on site.
Excuse me, the gas station?
The structure.
Yeah. That one, yeah.
The old structure, the old gas station.
Correct. So we've spoken with the planning department while we were outside, and we will submit a demolition permit, and we believe we have a survey that we could submit along with it, and we could expedite that request as much as possible.
Just to clarify for the board, I think what Keith was saying was the two conditions of a neg deck, as it pertaining to what this board's looking at in terms of the sign, there were certainly other conditions in there, not really relevant for your, you know, what you're looking at, but there were other conditions in that conditional neg deck.
And then regarding the variance relief requested to this board, as you recall, we've made a full presentation as to justification for the variances, which were primarily for parking and for signage. This application was thoroughly vetted over the past four years and received approval from the New York State DOT, Suffolk County DPW, the Long Island Pine Barrens Commission, the Town Planning Board, and various town agencies, including the town's outside traffic consultant, AKRF. So with all that, and with the proof that has been submitted, and all of the mountain of exhibits and documents that have been filed with this application, we respectfully request that the public hearing be closed tonight, and that this board, the zoning board of appeals, grant the requested minimum relief based on the proof filed and the exhibits submitted to this board.
Go through for me exactly what you were looking this board to grant in the way of variances. I know it's got to do with signs.
Yeah.
So let's limit our discussion tonight. Two signs, and, but let's go specifically which, what we have to do and what the, you know...
I'm going to defer to our project engineer, Mr. Tartaglia from High Point Engineering.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just review all of the variances, and if anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me as I go through them.
Okay.
Okay, so the first relief we're looking for is a variance for the monument sign, which is the freestanding sign, as 9 Flanders Road does not have a principal structure. I have the exhibit over there, but I can easily explain it. The gas station lot is comprised of two separate tax lots, and the front lot, which is at the very corner of the property, which is where the sign is located, is very, very small. There's no structures within it. However, the lot is an agglomeration of three total lots, the entire zoning lot. So this is really just a sort of a de minimis request that's just a function of a very, very small tax lot, which I'm not even really sure how it got that small. The dimensions are 20 by 20.
So the monument sign is in that small tax lot?
Yes, ma'am. The one up front.
Okay, the little tiny cube that's up at the corner of the...
If you have a picture, instead of describing what we should be imagining, let's take a look at it, so there's no ambiguity. Much better.
May I just present this to the board?
Sure.
Yes, okay. It'd be helpful if the audience could also see it, but...
We don't know how to do that, though.
Well, you know, once you explain to us, you flip it, and you'll just explain it back to them.
Okay, so as is depicted on the plans in front of you, this little outline here is the corner of the property, is the small tax lot. As you can see, the only structure located is the sign.
Same drawings that we put, that showed to the Riverside Civic Association.
Okay, so they're familiar with them. Okay.
And there are also the drawings that are in front of you as well.
Okay.
Just colorized for ease of view.
Is this, is this the same? No, it's not quite the same.
Yeah, that's got a site plan.
Basically, yeah, okay, all right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and the next one also relates to signage that's relief for the ground sign, canopy signs, and wall signs to have five total colors where three is permitted.
And these are for, I'm sorry, side, canopy?
Yep, ground sign, canopy signs.
Yeah.
And wall signs on the building.
Anthony, can you tell us anything about any planning board discussion about their feelings on the number of other signs that we're going to be hearing through this discussion?
The planning boards provided their comments, and it relates to the signs. They asked for the removal of the Welcome to Riverside sign, because we're going to deal with that separately. And I believe, what was it, two, did they say?
Two, Rabhan, three canopy signs.
All right, so we just got that tonight, so that's why...
We're going to be looking at a site plan that contains referrals, fire marshals, to agencies and everything else, lighting, all that stuff's still got to be addressed.
But what we're at, being asked to approve is what?
Just the signs.
No, the colors.
The variances that Chris is reviewing with you now.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that I understand. I'm talking about, he said, ground, canopy, and wall signs with regard to the colors.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So what is that?
Okay, so again, pointing to the exhibit on my right, this is a 3D rendering of the entire property that shows the signage actually quite well. So what we have are the 7/11 logos on the signs, and it's almost imperceptible, but the 7/11 sign has a green LEVN, which is their corporate standard, and the seven is actually comprised, believe it or not, of three different colors in their corporate standard, though there's an orange and an off-orange that is almost imperceptible. And the reason why we show this exhibit is to show that, well, we understand the code is for three total, three maximum colors, that it's really imperceptible to see the fourth color on the 7/11 logo. So that's the relief that's requested.
And the background is considered a color.
White is considered a color. So the white is considered a color, the green is considered a color, and the red is considered two colors?
Right, total of five, yes, that's correct.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, it's the yellow and the red.
It's a great exhibit. A great exhibit. There you go.
There you go. Okay, so it's five colors, and the code calls for three. Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to ask this. So there was other 7/11s that have gone up into town. Is this all consistent with the same signage?
Hampton Bays.
Okay, I just want to be sure that this is not at variance to even any of those. And you guys are generally happy with how that has turned out, the planning board?
And since you brought it up, this design was reprogrammed, we'll call it, to match the West Hampton Beach 7/11 that was recently approved and built.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Keith, that's an important point.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so the next variance is also relating to the canopy signs, and this one is a proposal for 24-inch-tall canopy signs where there's a maximum height of six inches. Now, my read of the code and the intent of the code on this one is truly for a canopy or almost an awning on the front of a building, where you've got a very small vertical fascia that would be located at the front of the awning. They're applying that logic to a gasoline canopy, which is obviously a completely different structure. So I just refer to this exhibit as well, just to show that, so these are 24 inches tall, and this is the vantage point from the roadway. So they are visible, not overly so, and clearly if we reduce them to 25% of that size, they would not be legible, so, which would be six, six inches. So from half a foot to two feet, we don't believe that these are out of character, or, and certainly if they were only six inches, they wouldn't really even be necessary, they wouldn't serve a purpose.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the next relief, again, related to signage, is that we're proposing internally illuminated fueling canopy and wall signs. Just by a point of note, the freestanding sign, the monument sign at the corner, will be externally illuminated, but for the price sign, which is an internally illuminated structure. But we're only here for relief for the canopy and the wall signs on the building for internal illumination.
And if I may, just on that note, Chris, when we were here last time, we actually submitted decisions from this board that related to those. The first was the McDonald's located at 30 Flanders Road and Riverside. That's application under Lake Creek Properties LLC. Decision is D023141 of December of 2023. And then there's another application, was matter of Effany Realty Company, to allow for internally illuminated monument sign at the gas station located at 172 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, under decision D012747, July of 2010, corrected by decision D012758 of August 5th of 2010. So there's precedent for that.
Okay.
Ready for the next one?
Yeah.
This next one is another geometrical issue with the lot, and this one has to do with the setback of the curb cut on Riverly Avenue. And I'm going to just point to the sight line exhibit that I have here. So the setback of this curb cut, which is this driveway here, is only three feet to the inflection point of the property line, which is in between this, our property, and the adjacent property to the south. However, if you notice geometrically, there is a triangular portion of this property, and I'm not sure how it was created, but there's a triangular portion that bifurcates this extension of the property line to Riverly Avenue. So what is, on paper, a three-foot setback is actually roughly 28 feet setback if we were to do the extension of that property line. And the reason why we don't want to move that curb cut further, closer to the intersection, is just purely planning and engineering related. We want those curb cuts to be as far away from the intersection as possible for traffic safety. Suffolk County Department of Public Works and DOT would obviously confirm that desire. So we believe that with, this is again, just a matter of site geometry, but in terms of actual practicality, there's really no negative aspect to this whatsoever, and it would comply with code if this were a more regular lot line that extended directly to the right of way.
Is that your lot line, or is that a hypothetical?
No, so this is our lot line, and again, I'm not sure, Madam Chair, why it's angled like that.
Because when they did the traffic circle, the Suffolk County DOT ripped it all out and replaced it all, and that's how they...
So it was part of a taking.
And it might have been a taking then.
They didn't take it, they just, you know, they moved...
But that little triangle is not actually your property.
That's correct, that is our neighbors to the south.
Okay.
But your main point is, to a person driving by, they're not going to see the property line, and it will look like what otherwise would be normally compliant, generally compliant?
Right, and furthermore, what I would offer, that if the property were not irregular as it was shown, I believe the intent of the code is safety. I believe they want curb cuts separated from other lot lines so that curb cuts are not very near each other. But this is, that is actually accomplished with this, again, because of this odd bifurcation and angularity of that property line. So the intent of the code is met with safety for separation of curb cuts, however, on paper, it shows us three feet.
And is that where a sign is?
No.
All right, that's just the curb cut?
Right.
Nothing, okay.
Correct.
Is there anything we have to do with it?
Just issue the variance for it.
Yeah.
A variance for the curb cut?
Yeah, this is technically non...
Okay, okay, okay.
The next one is to allow parking stalls located in the front yard, and what that is referring to is along Flanders Road, we've got a 10-foot setback to parking. Those stalls are necessary to meet the required parking or to at least provide additional parking on site during busier times. There is already a significant, there will also be a significant landscape buffer along Flanders Road, and notably, as you, if you're familiar with the property now, there is literally nothing, it's asphalt right up to that property line. So the proposed condition is substantially better than what's out there today.
So what's the...
And it's only eight stalls. It's the eight on the northernmost portion.
Right.
That's correct.
And is there, other than the eight, is there a setback issue here or not?
It is that, is that technically you're not allowed to have parking in the front yard, so what, what is it, 10 feet, Chris?
Front yard's 50 feet here, yeah, and required 50, so it would be virtually impossible to create any parking at all if we complied with the 50 feet.
And actually, Chris, could you just point out, is that the building envelope that you've put on the drawing?
That is, yeah, thank you, Keith. So this darker line is actually, depicts the actual setbacks for the yard. So this is the building envelope, this small semi-rectangular-shaped box here, and that, I think, states the case pretty well for the inability to provide any compliant parking on the site, other than within this very small envelope.
And so you're talking about a 10-foot setback and a buffer, a vegetative buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, the next item is a variance for actual number of parking stalls. Again, because we've combined lots here, we've got parking located primarily on the gas station lot, but the parking is primarily being generated for the convenience store itself, because that's the building, and that's where the parking count is generated from. So basically, what we are providing is 31 stalls against, we've broken up, at planning's request, we've broken up these parking counts, so they're quite confusing, but we need a total of five. Okay, so we need a total of 36, we're providing 31, which is a relatively de minimis variance for use of this nature.
And we've submitted a traffic study that indicates that we have more than enough sufficient parking for this, and our traffic engineer is on the Zoom call, he's just not with us now. That study indicated that the 31 is more than sufficient to handle the volume of traffic that we anticipate from this convenience store.
And you're variance of, we leave for five. Okay. Is there any buffer in any plan that if you found after a Saturday summer traffic load of people stopping at gas, beer, and ice, and they were continuing heading south, and you found that you needed additional parking because it just wasn't working? Is that possible at all?
You know, it is, but not without a variance, and again, I harken, I harken back to that envelope, but there's a lot of space out here in the west side of the property that we could accommodate substantially more stalls if needed, indeed.
And also, Nick Tortorello, our traffic engineer, did testify that what happens in actuality, practicality, is that the school is positioned to become pseudo-parking spots. We know we're not allowed to add them for the parking calculation, but we know a lot of people do that.
Right, okay.
Get gas running.
Yeah.
One left.
We're ready. We save the easiest one for last, because it is completely non-self-imposed. We are required to be a certain distance from the Conic River and a certain distance from the church that is located across the street. That distance is 500 feet minimum required. We are, with the combined properties, a total of 320 feet from the Peconic River and 360 feet from the Goodwill AME Zion Church property corner. So these are existing conditions, both of those uses have been there for a long time, and our site was a gas station for a long time. So these are essentially unable to be altered, so we do require the relief.
And where does planning come in on this?
Well, we did the secret, because we needed to finish that in order for this board to finish up their consideration. Once you're done with your review, the applicant will go back to planning with a formal application, and we will review and process that application. That's when it gets referred to all the involved agencies, the fire marshal or engineer. There's a special exception, so there'll be another public hearing at our end, just so you know. And that's when we're going to get into the nitty-gritty of the lighting and landscaping details. You should note, they went before the Pine Barrens. You know, we're going to bring this into compliance with the clearing, which, nothing has to do with the variances here, but we're going to bring this into compliance with the maximum amount of clearing.
You know, they've, even with the tank underneath, they're going to push it another 10 feet into the property, so it's another 10 feet of work, feet away from the actual river, but it's also separated by all sorts of infrastructure. But, you know, so we, we, we're also, we're working through and incorporating, you know, the site plan elements.
The Town of Riverhead submitted a couple of comments on a few projects in the traffic circle, content of which I don't recall, but did the planning board take that up and incorporate what was deemed to be fair, reasonable, and accommodatable requests?
Yeah, I don't remember the comments from Town of, you know, it was four years ago that we started this.
Right.
But we're not on a formal application yet also, so there's no, you know, you know, we did a pre, pre-submission on this.
Okay. And if I, if I recall correctly, most of the comments were about specific site plan issues, not necessarily variance related.
Oh, yeah, the, sure, always, and traffic and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And, and one major one was pedestrian safety, and I just want to point out for the board's edification, condition number 10, if I could just read it. The applicant contacted the Suffolk County DPW, the jurisdictional agency, for the roundabout to request additional safety improvements, including rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the pedestrian crossings of the roundabout, which will be effective at increasing the visibility of pedestrians crossing the roundabout entrances and exits, low, low cost, and would not contribute to vehicular delays since vehicles must yield to pedestrians in crossways anyway, and I'm just going to add under New York State law. The Suffolk County DPW will make the decisions on improvements and implementation. The proposed site access on New York 24 slash Flanders Road and on Riverly Avenue slash County Road 104 will follow applicable New York State DOT and Suffolk County DPW safety and design standards.
All right, so it looks like we have, if I can just kind of go back, we've got the monument sign, which will be externally, externally illuminated, and it's going to meet the 32 square feet by the removal of Welcome to Flanders. We've got the five colors, which is comparable to what we've done in two other places. We've got the canopy signs that were being proposed for 24 inches versus six inch max, a maximum of six inches. Internally illuminated canopy wall signs. Again, whereas what this board has approved in the past in other situations. The curb cut is, now what do we have to do with the curb cut again? What do we have to approve on the curb?
So, so 20 feet is required, and we're technically three feet. So you're approving a 17-foot.
So three feet from the, from the property line?
adjoining property line, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's.
I would argue that's a unique situation, because of the traffic.
Indeed.
Okay.
Is it three feet? Because we advertised it as plus or minus. Is that, is that number on the survey?
2.8, I think they rounded.
What did it say on the survey? Like, we're going to grant a variance for a number?
My apologies, it's 3.9. I guess they rounded down.
Okay. We, I'm talking about the parking that's intruding into the front line on Flanders Road, but you, you've got eight spaces indicated there with a 10-foot setback with a vegetative buffer. And then the reduction of the needed 36 parking spaces to 31. And this, a traffic study seems to support that's okay. And then the, the last item is the distance from the, the river and the church. 320, 360 versus the maximum of 500. And your point being that this is a pre-existing use. These, these facilities, these buildings have been there for a long time.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Could I just get one clarification on the 500-foot setback? So is it the gas station itself, the physical, you know, pump, pumps, that is the 500-foot distance? I mean, I understand you have an integrated property and you're counting the whole thing as one, and that you're probably drawing from the closest boundary. But is it the gas station or the convenience center that is, triggers the 500-foot?
Much more conservative than that. It's actually our property line, our right-of-way line.
The property line.
Yeah, so we're counting from the borders of the property.
Okay, so it's from the borders of the property, not from the, the.
Not from the structures.
Right.
Or anything.
And I, I guess the next question would be, if they weren't, if it wasn't integrated and there were three separate properties, what would the distances be? And is, that's why I was asking, is it the gas station or the convenience center?
Yeah, so the river is parallel. So I don't think there'd be any difference with the river. The Zion Church is off to the right, so I would say that number might be, our property line here is about 110. So I think we'd still need relief, but it might be more in the order of, if it was just the gas station lot, I think it might be more in the order of about 400 feet versus 500.
Understand.
I'm sorry, I'm, that's a little rough.
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand what, in practical terms, what is the real relief?
It would, it would still need relief, yet smaller relief.
Sure.
Since we added the lot, that relief became just a little smaller.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a question. Did you eliminate a canopy sign?
We did. So the canopy sign, we haven't updated this plan yet, but we're going to eliminate this canopy sign, which faces south. It faces the property to the south of us. We believe that it doesn't serve a purpose. We hope that's okay by the board.
Yeah.
So how many canopy signs do you have then?
Two total.
Two total?
Yes.
Were three were proposed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm going to open this up to the, to the audience, but I just want, I just laid out exactly what we're being asked to deal with, and that's the comments that we're going to accept, only on those issues that are presented to this board tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, you might want to stay here in case there's a, a reaction. All right, that's fine. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. All right, we're going to take turns, but do you remember what my constraints were? You're talking about the specifics that I just ran through. Okay. And three minutes, please, for each comment. Okay. And, and if you're repeating yourself from last time, we've, we took everything that you said into account, so, okay. Did I, did I swear you in before?
No.
Okay. Then let me, are you an attorney?
No.
Okay. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Beverly Prokowski, and I have lived in Northampton for 47 years.
And Beverly, where do you live? Your address?
3911 Lake Avenue.
Okay.
Okay. I live right off Lake Avenue, one of the roads that leads directly into the traffic circle, the same traffic circle where this proposed 711 and gas, gas station would be built. I care deeply about my community, and I see every day what works here and what does not. That's why I'm standing before you tonight. With two gas stations already serving this corridor, a third one, especially one requiring so many variances, does nothing to enhance the gateway into Riverside. The number of variances requested suggests that this project is trying to force something into the site that simply does not belong there. The excessive lighting, oversized signage, parking issues, and environmental concerns are all clear signals that this proposal is not good to match for this location. We are not against development. We welcome it. But we want development that aligns with the RRAP and enhances the entrance to our hamlet. We respectfully encourage the property owner to pause this proposal and explore alternatives that support the RRAP's goals and reflect the vision this community has worked so hard to build. A project that follows the RRAP can be profitable for the owner while giving the community something beautiful, safe, and consistent with our long-term revitalization efforts. We truly hope the owner will work with us toward that win-win solution. In closing, I ask the board to consider the long-term impact this project would have on our gateway, our safety, and our quality of life. We deserve development that lifts our community up, not one that relies on extensive variances just to fit. Please protect the integrity of the RRAP and the future of our hamlet by denying this proposal. Thank you for your time, for listening to those of us who live these realities every day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. But I really want to stress again, we are not dealing with the subject of the, of the business there. We are dealing with the variance requests that were presented, that I went through very carefully. So please address your comments to those. And I think I did swear you in.
You did sign me in, ma'am.
Okay, can you please state your name and address again?
My name is Carla Casper. I live on 20th and Am Trail in Flanders, New York, 11901. See, Casper liked the host. I am, I'm bringing new information as a risk management professional. There are two risks and one request.
Okay.
Our risks have to do with new information that since the last time the applicant was in front of you, we have had five fatalities on Route 24. Five, one of which was at the location of this build. So regardless of what the traffic engineers have been telling you, the public safety risk in this location has been an ongoing problem. This is the third fatality in the last dozen years at this address. So as a risk management professional, I have to advise you that traffic fatalities are not a risk that is acceptable to the community, nor should it be acceptable to any reasonable person. So again, these variances, it is a very much a shoehorned scenario. They're trying to put something into an area that has a lot of problems and a lot of public safety concerns. The second risk that I'd like to talk about is that this is not embraced by the community. We had a meeting with them. We asked for things to be done, one of which has been considered now that they're in front of you, but this investor has clearly signaled to us that our concerns are not of interest to him. So the risk here is reputational for our town, because if the community is strongly opposed to this, and every particular variance is, is allowed, then what you're signaling to the community is that the freeholders don't get to decide, and that's a risk. So I'm letting you know that. The third thing I would like is to have a request of you, that you keep this open and review more information, because the Town of Huntington went through this with 711 in 2011. Their zoning board chose to do special zoning for 711 that addresses some of this concern that we tried to address with the applicant last night, including the fact that they're seven by 24, and security concerns. So again, it's public safety that we are worried about. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your effort. We would like you to deny these variances and push this out until the public safety problems can be resolved by the state of New York. Thank you.
Okay. Can I just, Anthony, when you, when they, when you, they make the formal application to you, these considerations that you're going to be taking into account?
Yeah, I mean, just for, you know, you know, we went through the secret process, we've gone through the traffic stuff, and it's not an ideal situation. We, we understand that. But we've, you know, tried to mitigate as much as possible. But even things like lighting, we understand it's 24 hours, so we're going to have a lighting plan at some point. It's going to be engineered, and, you know, there's illumination levels that we have to adhere to, and, and height restrictions of the poles. So the nuances of, of.
Very specific.
For example, you know, we, site plan, we got to get into issues like air machines and vacuums, for example. You know what I mean? We, we hear the public, and they don't want certain things, and we'll, we'll get into that during the site plan. And they're going to have their opportunity to tell us, and tell the planning board.
And you'll be addressing some of the safety issues that they're raising?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Kim.
Just, just on a, a, a point raised that I want to get clarified. This site plan, in terms of signage and other presentations, a physical presentation to the community, is identical, consistent to the recent one in Hampton Bays and West Hampton? Can you clarify that again?
Well, the, the signage was.
The signage and the physical appearance of, of, you know, color scheme and lighting and things like that.
And a different location, and, you know, so we, you know, or the site specific, but yes. So far, the only people that I've seen was Target. Target is putting up a gray sign and gray ballers, by the way. But that's the only one. The other ones, they use their, their, their franchise colors, and the other 711s.
We've done that. McDonald's and stuff like that.
Yeah, and listen, on the number, I mean, the background, that's a little bit of a stretch in my opinion.
But the white?
Yeah, that's, that's crazy.
Okay, next. Have I, have I sworn you in before?
No.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Alan Prokowski. I live at 3911 Lake Avenue.
Okay, Alan.
Alan.
Alan Prokowski?
Yes. First off, I'd like to say, thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight. We saw this last night. That's how long, that, that, you know, the developers may have been working on it for 10 years, but you heard of all the departments he went through, and the last one was a community association, which he had a meeting last night. The community had no umpteenth whatsoever about this. If you deny their, what they're asking, it won't go up. We want something to go up, some type of development, but not a 711. I love 711s. This is going to kill people.
Okay.
Please think about that. And one thing I'd like to remind you, you asked someone to put this out so you can look at it, and the audience can look at it. Here it is behind the podium.
But did you see it last night when they had it?
It was put, just like it is now.
Did you see it last night when they had it?
It was opened up, but we really didn't get to go over and look at it.
Well, you have an opportunity tonight to take a look at it. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay. Anybody else who wishes to be heard? Come up. That's it.
Thank you.
Are you an attorney?
I am not an attorney.
Okay. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Sean McLean, 15 Columbia Avenue, West Hampton, New York, 11977.
Sean, you're S A.
S E A N. M C L E A N.
For saying, why are you S E A N?
S, S E A N.
S E A N.
M C L E A N.
Okay.
My issue with the conversation that we're having today is the lack of information that's actually being said, not what is being said. The majority of the variances are in favor of village business, not highway business, not gas station. The internally lit sign on the wall is in village business. The parking variance is in village business. This situation, if Sir Tillman Pat gets this passed, will happen in Bridge Hampton, Hampton Bays, Quogue, East Quogue, and Spian, where you have village business ordering highway business. So your precedent being set here is well beyond the great issues of the community, and those are really valid issues. And they've been fighting this thing for 15 years, 10 years, whatever that's been. But the precedent you're setting in village business throughout the town is drastic and dire if you let the manipulation of variances manipulate zoning. And that's what this is at the end of the day. That's all this is. And I beg you to look at this deeply and really understand the legal manipulation of zoning through the application of variances with a combined lot with two separate specialized zonings. They should file a zoning application to change the whole zoning if they want to do this. This is not the proper way to get a gas station 711 at this site. And it has nothing to do with the other precedents that they claim were set because they were not village business zoned. I'm sorry to be passionate about this, but it, it's bothering me that a legal argument is being made here. The community is passionately pleading, I'm trying to stick to the variances being asked for, and the story is not being presented correctly or adequately by the, the applicant and, and the representatives. Or planning, for that matter. The other thing is, they can't possibly park this, because there's a 65% vegetation requirement from the plan, from the Pine Barrens. So your variance is, would give them the right to have the actual application to the Pine Barrens adhere to the Pine Barrens regulations, right? So they need a parking variance so they can adhere to Pine Barrens, not a hardship on the property or the product. Right, so, so please, don't close this tonight, don't vote on this tonight.
I'm not going to vote on it tonight.
All right.
That is not what we do.
Look deeper into this, please. There's massive precedent being set here, and I'll personally hire Sir Tillman to go build three of these throughout the rest of the town if this gets passed. I'm one of their bigger clients. As their land use attorneys represent me on 45 acres on Long Island, this is just wrong. Thank you.
Okay. Can I just ask a question about the village business versus highway business? Because I know that there are two different designations of these properties.
Yeah, and I'm happy to start out with the mischaracterization that was just made. The precedent that we submitted was internally illuminated signs in the village business, not in the highway business. So I urge the board to take a look at those decisions. But I also, this came up during our meeting with the Civic Association, and I just, I know the board knows this, but I think the public needs to know, that in New York, the variance test is a balancing test that the zoning board performs, weighing the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the community, and they look at the five-factor test under Town Law 267B, including one, whether the variance would produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood, the specific variance, right? Whether, if feasible, alternatives exist, if the variance is substantial, the adverse effects on the community, and whether the difficulty was self-created. And I would just go back to the point that was made as far as planning and the secret determination that was made. Under New York law, and I'm reading right from the secret handbook, that a conditional negative declaration is defined as if an action is determined to impact the environment, but enforceable conditions can reduce impacts. And then coupled with that is the negative declaration definition, which says if an action is determined not to significantly impact the environment. That was the determination that was made by the planning board. So with regard to some of the community members' arguments, they really fall short because of the fact that, as I said at the outset, that this project has been well documented, well analyzed. There have been a mountain of studies and analysis that have been done by various different experts in this field that look at these day in and day out. With regard to the lighting, the site is, it will have to be dark skies compliant. I drove there last night just because there was an allegation that was made, and I wanted to see for myself with respect to the bathrooms that exist at the other two gas stations, which I won't go into, but the fact of the matter is, that area is very, very dark. There's not even proper street lighting in that area. So in terms of lighting up this area and providing what we call eyes on the street for public safety reasons, this site will enhance that and reduce the amount of activity that happens in the late hours because there will be eyes on the street. Most of the variances, with all due respect, and I know it was said by Mr. Tartaglia, but I wish for the board to repeat it, that they're primarily due to the irregular size and configuration of the lot and not because we're trying to squeeze 10 pounds into a 5-pound bag. The property owner who sat before you, Mr. Sleepy, him and his partners have owned this property for 60 years now. This is not a speculative build. This was a Getty gas station that operated here for many, many decades. And finally, just a point that Mr. Tartaglia raised to me, which I'd like him to say, so you're having it from a professional engineer. Chris, would you please speak about the reference that was made to the clearing limits under the Pine Barrens Commission regulations?
Yes. So what I think I heard the prior speaker say is that there's a 65% landscaping requirement as part of Pine Barrens. He's got that backwards. It's a 65% clearing limit, and our plan complies. So he has his numbers a little off.
And as far as the change of zone application, we met several times. We met with the planning commissioner, and when we added the second lot, which was the desire of the planning department was to add the second lot in order to, we removed about six variances by doing that alone, was the fact that it was zoned appropriately. The store is retail, and it's zoned appropriately in the village business zoning district, and the gas station is zoned appropriately in the highway business district. It did not require a change of zone. There was no requirement under state law to merge the lots in any way, shape, or form, and we don't intend to do so. So as far as any allegations that we should be coming back to the town for a change of zone, it really is utter nonsense. With that, we conclude.
So to be clear, each use is appropriate for each of the properties you're proposing, both the gas station and the convenience store?
100%, Mr. McDonald.
Okay. Can somebody speak to, you know, the fatality issue and the analysis of that as it relates to?
Signage?
Well, it's, well... Kevin, I just, I have to try in here. You know, there's got to be a nexus between what you're considering. The planning board hired a traffic consultant. They reviewed a traffic report prepared by somebody else. We have prevented this to the maximum extent possible, and I'll be honest with you, absent the planning board, this board saying no to a gas station and no to a 7-Eleven, I'm not going to be able to address that specific concern.
Yeah.
And so I can't get into it.
We can't.
I just, you know, it's addressed. The traffic study's been done and reviewed by traffic.
And I'm sorry to... What we're being asked to deal with.
Well, if you understood, if there was, if it was, let me make the nexus, right? I understand all the difficulty in trying to, you know, imagine what happened in five specific instances, but if it's centered around inadequate lighting or centered around other types of behaviors that were irrelevant to the application, then that's dismissive, right? But if it's germane to what might be happening there, I was just asking.
But I think that's going to be part of the planning, the planning thing. Ours is narrow. We play a narrow role in this. Anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Can I just, for the planner?
You come up to this, but we're really going to be limiting...
This is going to be a minute.
Okay, good.
When was that traffic study done?
It was done last year in September. We actually did two traffic studies too, because there was one that was done in the summer, if you remember, and then we had to go back. We were asked to do an additional traffic study during the shoulder season, which we performed. So they're, around 2024, and then our consultant at that site.
Yeah, they're not 10 years old.
And not to mention, just...
They're fairly recent.
For the public certification, you had three sets of traffic engineers, I'm sorry, four sets, because our private engineer who's on the phone, right? You had DOT traffic engineers, you had DPW traffic engineers, you had AKRF traffic engineers, and Mr. Tortorella from Stonefield Engineering. Four sets of traffic engineers have reviewed this site plan and approved it.
Okay.
And we're still talking about signs.
We're still talking about the eight items that I put down.
Right, and traffic studies have nothing to do with whether or not there should be five colors on a sign, or whether it should be illuminated, or whether it should be a monument sign, or whether there should be one or five less parking spaces. I don't see what the nexus is there between traffic and these requests. I don't see a nexus between fatalities and these requests.
Right, right. Okay, anybody else in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
Nick Tortorello's on here, but no one, he doesn't have his hand up.
That's our traffic engineer.
Okay, okay. All right. So I know this has been a long process.
We really appreciate your indulgence.
Well, okay, so we are going to, I'm going to propose that we close the public hearing on the eight items that we were discussing and that we have a decision. I mean, how long do you need the decision?
Well, we do need revised plans with the canopy and all of the amendments that you've made.
We'll submit them next week.
Yeah, and I think you can, you know, keep it open for the written subs like everything else, but maybe put it for a decision.
I think we should put it for a decision in January, yeah.
I agree.
January 15th or February 5th?
January 15th is the one.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you, manager.
Well, we'll take a vote. We have to take a vote.
Written submissions, 12-5?
12-5, yep.
Decision 115?
Yes.
Okay, second.
Okay, who made that? I guess, all right, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Repin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you also. Trust me, we've heard your comments, but we have a limited role here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good holiday.
I guess it's just that.
I'm out of juice.
Okay.
Kevin, yours go out too?
Yeah, just one out. Yeah, yeah. It must be battery.
You have a, you have to read one?
That's mine.
No, no. Mine is, mine is working.
Yeah, mine, I don't have anything.
You're not reading anything?
You're not saying anything, John.
No, mine's on. Yours is myself organizing here.
Take this one, and I'll take this one. Okay, so I'm going to put that there, and I'll take this one.
This one's on here. Pass this one down.
Outside, please.
Yeah, if you want to reconfigure how...
Everybody outside, we still have business to conduct. So thank you.
Yeah, if you want to reconfigure, like, how you want things, like, I could put this down here, and they could talk here.
That's it, we're just decisions now, yep, yep.
That's kind of weird.
We're at the point of reading our decisions. Okay, and what did I just do with the decisions? Oh my goodness, I must have put them in my pile.
Do you have decisions for me to read?
Okay.
No?
Bob, you're first.
I'm first. Okay. I got, there's one here, it's fine. This is for the decision on Utopia Properties LLC. This application is for property located at 599 June Road, West Hampton. Applicants seek variances for fortress decks and a reduced-sized swimming pool on an oceanfront property where the dwelling is seaward in the coastal erosion hazard area, with conditions that appropriate revegetation and dune re-nourishment plans be submitted, approved, implemented by the application, passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code 1, Town Code Section 138-9B, for the demolition of trellis and outdoor shower platform and for the construction of a pool, front-covered porch with a second-story covered balcony above a rear, second-floor covered porch, and a rear second-story deck 2, Town Code 138-9B, and Town Code 330-46, for a pool deck and stair to the pool deck. The variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by Angelo Joseph Sekra, last revised September 18, 2025. This decision is conditioned upon the securing of a coastal erosion management permit application with the accompanying dune restoration beach grass revegetation plan filed with the Environmental Division and the issuance of a certificate of coastal compliance to address the unauthorized clearing of the premises prior to issuance of any certificates for the proposed improvements. Additionally, this decision is conditioned upon the construction of a dune, walkway, steps to replace the existing sand path, and removal of wood plot, outdoor shower, fencing, outdoor furniture, and outdoor accessories. Grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Repin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Me.
Okay, chair votes aye.
Do we keep going?
Okay, Bob, you've got the next one, too.
This is for 40 Ocean View Dune LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 90271-1-44. This application is for property located at 40 Ocean View Dune, Ocean View Drive, Shinnecock Hills. Applicant requests an amendment to a prior variance to include pyramid relief for the rooftop railing. While adjacent property owner opposes the granting of the variance and disputes total calculation, this board finds that the request for 18 cubic feet of pyramid encroachment passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, ZBA decision number D024064 dated June 20, 2024 is amended to grant relief from the Town Code 33084D for a sky plane encroachment of 18 feet to legalize a rooftop railing as shown on the volume calculation prepared by Studio B&amp;M Architectural, last dated June 11, 2025. The granting of the variance is conditioned upon applicant and all successors and interests installing and maintaining planters containing six-foot-tall cedar pine top tree trees along the west side of the roof deck as detailed in November 7, 2025, November 19, 2025 letters from Carl Benacasa Esquire of the Benacasa Group. Decision is also conditioned upon there being no outdoor speakers or lighting on the rooftop other than lighting on the bulkhead soffit. Grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval. All the provisions of the D024064 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
No.
Mr. Repin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Okay. Chair votes aye.
Okay. Is that, oh, it's me.
It's you, John.
Yep. Okay. I have a decision in the application of Malcolm Merrick, Suffolk County Tax Map Number This application is for property located at 385 Oak Avenue, Flanders. Applicant requests relief for a proposed accessory apartment to be located within the basement of an existing modest-sized dwelling. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed accessory apartment. Town Code Section 330-11.2F Special Standards for a principal front yard setback of 41.3 feet where 42 feet is required, 70% of the required 60 feet, and Town Code Section 330-11.2G1 Special Standards Minimum and Maximum Sizes to allow the size of the accessory apartment to be 76.54% of the total floor area habitable living space of the main house where a maximum of 35% is permitted, as shown on the plot plan and the floor plans and elevations, all prepared by Robert M. Pancheck, PE, revised October 27, 2024. The grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Repin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair votes aye. Okay, I have a decision, Robert Foyer and Julie Lang, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-323-2-31. This application is for property located at 32A Penny Lane, Hampton Bay. Applicants request relief for new one-family dwelling and shed on a non-conforming lot burdened by wetlands that was previously granted variances from this board for a house that was not constructed. As applicants modified the plans to move centrally, to more centrally locate the proposed dwelling, eliminate the pyramid encroachment, and reduce all previous grant variances except for the total side yard, this board finds that the application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a new one-family dwelling, 1, Section 330-115C, continuance for a total side yard of 38.2 feet where 65.3 feet is existing, and a rear yard setback of 28.4 feet where 39.3 feet is existing, and 2, Section 330-83C yards, and 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses for an elevated deck on the north side that is a required, that is in a required side yard and rear deck in the required rear yard. This board also grants relief from Town Code Section 33034 Business District Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory rear yard setbacks of 16.7 feet where 50 feet is required for a proposed shed and uncovered rear deck. These variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hadera LS, last revised July 21, 2025, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Stuart M. Narofsky RA, last dated July 17, 2025. This decision supersedes and replaces ZBA decision number D022029 dated March 17, 2022, and is continued and conditioned upon the maintenance by applicants and all successors and interests of the arborvitae tree shown on the aforementioned survey, and that there be no access to the rooftop area of the main roof. The grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permisses. Applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second?
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Bob, you're next.
This decision is for the application of Thomas Strauss and Wendy Cromwell, Suffolk County Tax Map 90178-2-7. On February 1, 2024, by decision D024008, this board granted pyramid height and rear yard setback for a proposed one-family dwelling on a property located at 1108 Flying Point Road, Watermill. By letter dated August 28, 2025, Elizabeth Baldwin, Esquire of Essex, Hefter, Angel, Di Natalia, and Pasca, requested that the decision be modified to correct a mistake in the previous plans reviewed by the ZBA. Specifically, Ms. Baldwin, with architects Viola Rami and Martha Albarama of Steel Lamont Rami, explained to the board that the pyramid encroachment submitted to the board in the 2024 was calculated from the wrong base elevation line, elevation 18 where it should have been calculated at elevation 16. As such, the correct total encroachment is 166.21 cubic feet and not the 66.9 cubic feet granted. Therefore, this board amends ZBA decision number D024008 to grant pyramid encroachment in the amount of 166.21 cubic feet for a roof railing as shown on the plan submitted by Steel Lamont Rami Architects dated August 6, 2025. All of the provisions of D024008 remain in full force and effect.
Second?
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair votes aye. John's going to retell him.
Have a decision in Christopher Stubelk and Blythe Kane, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-295-1-13.1. This application is for property located at 10 Duval Drive, Hampton Bays. Applicants seek variances for an accessory apartment located in a building that once was a main dwelling on the premises. This applicant passes the standards set forth by New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, the board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a accessory apartment, Town Code 330-11-2, oh, 2F Special Standards, to allow an accessory apartment to be located on a 26.136 square foot lot, sorry, where a minimum of 30,000 square feet is required, and Town Code 330-11.303.
2G.
2G. 2Gs Special Standards Minimum and Maximum Sizes to allow the accessory apartment to be 371 square feet where a minimum of 400 square feet is required, as shown on the survey prepared by Gary Benz LS dated July 7, 2025, and the floor plans prepared by Diane Harold RA dated August 2025. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicable as already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for a final approval of the subject premises, including the revisions of the survey to reflect the proposed accessory apartment prior to the issuance of any certificates.
Second?
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Okay, and chair votes aye, okay? Julie, go.
Yep. LHBH Properties LLC, Suffolk County Town Map 900-86-2-7.5. My vision is going. This application is for property located at 97 School Street, Bridgehampton. Applicant requests a parking variance in connection with the conversion of a pre-existing garage into retail space with specific conditions in place, and in light of the fact that the planning board finds that the location of the subject property adjacent to the Bridgehampton municipal parking is sufficient to cover the need for additional parking under the proposed application, and will review the plans with the site plan process. During the site plan process, this board finds that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-95 Schedule of Off-Street Parking Space Requirements for Non-Residential Uses to Allow Five Spaces Where a Total of Ten Parking Spaces Are Required on the Property for the Conversion of a Freestanding Garage to a Retail Occupancy in the Existing Two-Story Building Used as a Commercial Building. In addition, this board clarifies that the five-foot setback from the south property line previously recognized in ZBA decision number 6819 dated November 4, 1983 is actually 4.5 feet, and the one-foot setback from the west property line previously recognized in the decision is actually 0.9 feet. These variances are as shown on the survey prepared by Michael W. Minto LS, surveyed March 20, 2025. Grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permisses applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the following. One, the applicant will remove all encroachments on the adjacent town property and revise the survey indicating such removal for submission to the planning board. Two, the applicant will remove/relocate any non-conforming items, buildings, structures on the south property line and elsewhere on the premises to a conforming location as may be identified by the planning board, and review the survey indicating such for submission to the planning board. Three, pursuant to Town Code Section 330-101, Parking Trust Fund, a fee in the amount of $10,000 shall be paid to the Town of Southampton. Parking Trust Fund to be collected by the planning board during the site plan review process. Four, all parking spaces will remain free and accessible to the public. And five, no building permit shall be issued until the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board issues, issue a certificate of appropriateness.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Rebhan?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair votes aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.